This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
So, I'm going to call to order the Select Board meeting for June 21st at about 6:02. And if everybody could stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge.
The United States of America and a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Well, thanks, everybody. We have almost an overflow corral tonight. Good. We have a busy agenda, so thanks for coming. We will try to get through this as efficiently as we can. So, we don't have any public hearings tonight, but we do have open time for the public if anybody has some things to say to us for a few minutes before we start. Of course, you might want to just pull the mic down.
Of course, I'm always here. Tammy Walunas, 298 College Highway in representing the Southampton Historical Society. On behalf of the society, we are having our ice cream social. It's going to be July 4th from 2:00 to 4:00 at Clark Chapman House. All are welcome. And for those that were unable to make it to the festival, you'll be able to get tours through the buildings to see the new items that we have out. So, everybody's welcome.
Good. Thanks. All right. Anybody else? Open time for the public. All right. So, if not, we'll just continue with our agenda. So, we are being recorded tonight, and we do have, I believe, our reporter from the reminder here as well. So, you may see something written up as well. But for those of you following on 191, you should be able to see us and hear us, as far as I know. All of our mics are working. So, we have two presentations tonight. The first one is from the Ad Hoc Senior Center Feasibility Committee with a couple of agenda items, the parcels of interest for a senior center and the approval of the RFQ for the feasibility studies. So, this is a joint meeting with them if they would like to represent themselves and call their meeting to order, if you would like to do that. Janet?
I need a motion to call the meeting to order for the Senior Center Feasibility Committee. Need a motion? Need a motion? Second? Second?
Okay. You're in order. All right. We may as well do two together. We have the Public Safety Building Committee here, too. You're a second on the agenda, but if you'd like to call your meeting to order, if you have a quorum. Do you have a quorum?
Yes, we do have a quorum. We'll call the meeting to order.
Okay. Have a second to call it? All right. All right. So, we'll have both meetings. All right. So, I think we're up with the Ad Hoc Senior Center Feasibility Committee. Who's going to talk? Janet?
I'll start out anyway. Good evening. I'm Janet Kane, 83 Glendale Road. I'm the co-chair along with Andrew LaFosse of the Ad Hoc Senior Center Feasibility Committee, the longest-named committee in history of Southampton. And we're going to go over three things tonight. We're going to go over the timeline that we've established. As you all know, we have a window based on the estate of David Parsons. Andrew will share with you the timeline, and he and Libby will follow up to review the request for qualifications that was approved by the Ad Hoc Committee last week. And then I'll just review our request to the Select Board for potential properties and letters of outreach to those properties. So, right now, the targeted properties, which are in the RFQ, are Moosebrook at 299 College Highway, MAP 28, Lot 29, and MAP 28, Lot 26, 79 Clark Street, 89 Clark Street, and MAP 9, Lot 141 on College Highway. So, I'm going to turn the timeline over to Andrew.
Okay. Very good.
Good afternoon. Pardon any technical difficulties that we made.
Okay. Perfect. Looks like we're working. Welcome. Glad we got it turned on. That's usually our biggest challenge.
Smooth as could be. So, we've established the timeline. Currently, our progress, we're about halfway down the line. However, this is basically our critical path to getting a Senior Center feasibility study completed by the May, let's see, March 16th deadline. We've identified some, as Janet alluded to, we've identified some properties of interest. We believe that, actually, there may be some overlaps, so it'd be great to obviously go over the RFQ with you all that we have previously, that our committee had previously approved. And as you can see on the timeline, we are up against the clock a little bit in regards to issuing this RFQ and getting a design firm signed on to conduct the actual feasibility study itself.
Can you make that just a little bit bigger, Andrew?
Sure.
Where do you have the lights on or off?
I don't know. The lights bother anybody? I think it's okay with the light. It's not too bad. It just needs to be a little bigger. So, we're looking at...
So, the relevant piece of information is basically here down.
Okay. Yep.
As you can see, we are two days away from hopefully issuing this RFQ, which would give the chosen design firm about, well, we would have nine months to choose a design firm, move forward with a feasibility study, and in that timeframe, hopefully come to a conclusion as to sort of narrow down property. Yeah.
But any of the possible design firms have got, looks like, about six weeks to respond? Is that right?
Yeah, that's pretty standard. The request for qualifications, obviously, is a bit less intensive than a request for proposals. But we will hopefully be conducting interviews over probably a month, three or four weeks, to be able to narrow down, depending on how many answers, responses that we get.
Okay. Good. Any questions? Anybody here? All right.
Libby, I think we can review the RFQ if you want.
Hi, I'm Libby Baldwin, 68 High Street. So, this is the draft or the final request for qualifications that we pulled together for the new senior center for an architect to perform the feasibility study. I can go through this in as much detail as you want, or I can skim through it, and you can ask questions. Don't know if you've had a chance to take a look at it already. So...
We've had it. I think if everybody had a chance to look at it, I think so.
Okay. Great.
Hit the highlight, you know, points. I mean, some of the highlights out of each category or each bullet point here or something.
So, the first, it starts out with an introduction and instructions on how and what is required for the submission.
Can you just back up a little bit, because I think what you just went over is important. It says the feasibility study is scheduled to be completed by March 16, 2023. The project fee shall be negotiated with the highest-ranked respondent with the maximum fee not to exceed $60,000.
Yes, that's correct. So, this is not a request for proposals. We're not asking for prices. So, we're going to select the firm that we feel is the most qualified and then negotiate a fee with an upper limit of $60,000. And the committee discussed that value or that fee, and we felt that it was appropriate for this study. Anything else?
Just kind of go maybe page by page and then hit some of the highlights, and if people have questions as we go through.
Let me see if I can put it page by page. Can you still read that?
Yeah.
Okay. So, the next section lists minimum requirements for the submission, and this information is duplicated later on during the selection criteria, but we felt it was important to have it right up in the front. So, there's certain minimum things that they need to submit. Designer selection form, they have to meet certain criteria, number of years of experience, they must be registered as an architect or an engineer, have to have at least 10 years of experience, and then certain experience with feasibility studies for senior centers. Certain forms that have to be submitted that are attached to this document, and they have to have certain insurance. They couldn't have, can't have filed for bankruptcy, and a few other things like that. And one thing that's pretty important here is that they have to be able, they have to acknowledge that they can complete this study by March 16th, because that is the deadline for this to be completed. So, we've outlined the schedule for the procurement, which is what Andrew just went over here in the RFQ here. And then we really are describing the background and the existing conditions, and members of the committee have done a lot of research into this, what the current situation is for the senior center and what we feel is appropriate for a new senior center. So, this is a background here.
I just think it's important to also note that the current population over the age of 60 is 33% of Southampton residents.
Yes. So, moving on, so that's the background. And then we've developed a summary of initial recommendations regarding the space and what we feel is appropriate to include in a new senior center. And that information is outlined on these bullets.
So, I have a general question on this, on the number six. Was this just like a conversation where everybody agreed on this point? How did you come to this being the final set of what you wanted to figure?
Deferring to Maureen.
There was a group of us that actually went to visit a number of senior centers, at least six or eight, and then based on that, came up with, you know, things that we'd like to consider. Obviously, South Hadley is much bigger than Southampton, so a lot of what they had, we didn't include, so they have much more space. You know, they own their own van. So, there were a lot of things that were excluded, but this is sort of the, not the final list by any means, but this is just recommendations in terms of...
Because I know, like, for example, the first one says 10,000 square feet, but best practices says four square feet per population. If you multiply that by the population, you're 8,400. Or under 5,000, you should add 1,000. So, I mean, you're pretty close. You're 9,500. But then, or 9,500 isn't that bad, but you already got 10,000. But then, when I looked down all these items there, I don't know necessarily how that would all fit people within 10,000 square feet.
Well, Hadley is very close. Hadley is 10,000 square feet, and it's what's on this list here is actually pretty similar to South Hadley, I mean, to Hadley. And their population is quite a bit less than ours, actually. So, anyway, there was a lot of work that went into looking at other places and trying to decide what would be in the best interest of Southampton.
I mean, the way I read this myself was that these are the sort of the desired amenities, if you will. And then when you have a design firm, you're going to see what's really realistic, right, to lay it out, and something may have to give at some point in time. Probably not everything can be included, but this is what you're kind of aiming for, the way I heard it. Right?
And I just want to add that the current population, the 33% of seniors in Southampton is based on the 2020 census. I believe the projection for the 2030 census is it's going to jump up to 40%, just to put some context around the conversation about today and tomorrow.
Janet Kane again. I was just going to sort of say what Francine said, that we are building not for today, but for the future. And I'm not sure where you're quoting that. Is that a senior center study analysis that you're referring to?
Yeah, I think it's 2020.
Sure. Great. Thanks.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
I just want to mention that at some point, wasn't part of the conversation, so if somebody else wants to mention it, there was a company that came on a Zoom meeting with this committee, including an organization called Lifespan, Lifespan, who specializes in design and construction of senior centers. And so, they were involved in Hadley. They were also involved in South Hadley, so they had a lot of good input.
Okay. So, I'll just continue on with the recommendations for the building space. So, it flows to the next page. And then also equipment recommendations, again, based on site visits and other research the committee had done. And the next, then we move on to the scope of work. So, this really is the meat of the RFQ, what we want them to do, and, you know, what the contract is going to be based on. So, it's defining those needs, comparing the space with other senior centers in similarly sized towns, conducting workshops or outreach from residents, performing a preliminary assessment of site conditions on four potential parcels, which Janet noted. We didn't list them specifically in the RFQ. And then performing a preliminary assessment of using, excuse me, town or privately-owned existing buildings. And we've listed four, we've listed three buildings and one potential additional site. We felt it was important to include the existing senior center as part of that evaluation, and then the adjacent fire station and property, the current police station, and then again, one additional building. And...
What's your thought on four there? Why does that one there?
There is a... Do you want to answer that, Janet? There is a potential building that is for sale that we did not want to include.
Yeah, and at the time, it's, yeah, Harley-Davidson Building, which was not listed at the time. It's now, has since been listed this last week on the market. And also, for example, Canal Lanes, which was just recently listed for sale. So, we want to leave a little flexibility in the listing.
So, with that, when you put four locations to be evaluated, are you limiting yourself too much? Do you want to say...
That's my question. Is the committee, right now, the committee's silent. So, I'm wondering if you're silent purposely, meaning it's off the table, and I'll say what it is. But I don't see reference to a consolidated senior center of public safety building.
Oh.
So, I don't, and I don't know if that was deliberate, that, no, the committee just doesn't want to deal with that at all.
We haven't met together yet. We're doing a separate, they're paralleling our study.
I think that from the standpoint of this list there, we looked at all possible land, both committees, since I'm on both committees, looked at what possible land with certain parameters are up and down Route 10, half a mile in or out of Route 10, and all existing possible buildings. We went over every single town-owned property and what would make, what would be possible. And the list was a little bit longer when we started. For example, the church had at one point talked about the possibility of doing something collaboratively, and then that was taken off the table by them. So, what was left really was the three main sites, senior center, fire station, police station. And then, because the other things are a little bit more of a moving target, originally, you know, the Harley-Davidson was for lease, and now it's more recently for sale. So, but there has been conversation back and forth about the possibility of having a combined...
So, it's not silent because they don't want to discuss it? It just hadn't come up because they're...
No, it comes up at every meeting. I report and Ed, who are on both committees, report back and forth on the work of each committee. So, we've been on parallel paths more or less all along.
Yeah, I think you'll find that, I mean, a lot of the properties are similar.
Yeah.
The acreage that we need is not going to, a full property. So, I mean, it wouldn't be the same building. It may be the same complex on the same property, but separate, really evaluated separately. But we may decide if the one property works for both and the owner of the property agrees, then there's no reason that we would not consider that. But we're looking today at the senior center. That's our charge. And I guess Rini said she's on both committees, so there's a lot of communication back and forth. But we can't speak for them, and I'm sure, you know, they would not speak for us. But if the same property comes up as the best solution for both, that would certainly be open to that. So...
You'll see with the public safety that the current fire station is one of the sites, the town-owned site. So, that, there's an overlap there. And then some of the private lands are almost identical, with the exception of, I think, one additional one on the public side, public safety side. But I think that the request from both committees is for the Select Board to follow up and send out a letter to the landowners and say that, you know, your property is identified for use of a town for public safety and/or senior center. Like...
Yeah. We'll get to that. Yeah. I think that's fine. No, my question was a little bit tied to John's, but I guess I'm, if I were on the receiving end of this, and all of a sudden you decide, okay, well, we want to look at maybe Harley-Davidson and Canal or something else, but you told me that it's only four. So, I mean, do you, I guess I'm asking, is, does it make sense to give you a little bit, a little bit more wiggle room to say four to six, or a maximum of six, or something like that?
Maybe so, because if we just say four...
You don't know what's out there.
Then it would be an amendment if we asked them to look at two more.
You can amend it. That's true. That is true. You can always amend it. But anyway, I just don't want to...
But it's an additional fee.
Yeah.
So, we could do that. We could say...
But you might want to just think about whether, you know, you know, a minimum four, maximum six, I mean, something like that. I don't know how you word those things normally in the official language of contracting. Might be an idea.
I haven't seen issue. I just want to say that the initial...
Pop up to the mic so everybody can hear you. Sorry. Thanks, Andrew.
The initial reason that we came up with these three or four was we had done an internal study, as Rini had mentioned, that kind of narrowed down. We had maybe a dozen, if not more, properties that we were looking at. And to give sort of a point of focus for any potential, any potential firms that would be responding to this, we wanted to sort of make it a pointed approach as, instead of leaving it open to say, you have X amount of parcels in Southampton that you could be looking at, right?
Sure.
So, that was the reason for the four.
Yeah, yeah. No, that's fine. Understood. Yeah. Yeah. No, I just didn't want you to get, you know, a hiccup later on down the line when somebody says, well, gee, you only told me I had to do four, so I'm not going to look at that other one that you're now interested in, you know. So, amendments are always possible. So, that's fine.
Okay. So, then the next, moving on with the scope. So, we're asking them to develop a conceptual design that would meet, you know, obviously, all codes and professional standards, as well as the needs that we've outlined previously. Develop costs, including any future fees for design and construction, so that we can use that for planning the next steps for the project, indoor and outdoor space requirements, staffing for the future, and then pulling this all together in a draft report. And then we want them to meet with us and to review it, and then to finalize it, and then present it to you folks before our deadline of March 16th. So, the next item is the qualification submittal requirements, what the package... So, we're expecting to get a qualifications package from either an architect or an engineering firm. And so, this is just identifying what they need to submit as part of that. So, you know, a list of their projects, a list of the references, a project's schedule, their experience, a lot of that type of thing. And then, once we receive the packages, we are evaluating them, or we'll be evaluating them, on two different sets of criteria, minimum criteria, and then comparative criteria. So, the first minimum criteria are outlined here. If they don't meet these minimum criteria, they're thrown out. So, every firm, in order to be moved on to the comparative evaluation criteria, they have to meet all of these minimum criteria. So, it's number of years in business, professional registration, number of projects. We thought it was important to include number of municipal clients rather than private clients. They have to be able to start and complete the project by certain dates, and they have to include all the documentation. So, if they don't meet any of those, any one of those, they're judged unacceptable, and they're not moving on to the next stage. The next criteria is comparative. So, we've come up with, I think it's five different categories. And we are, we will be evaluating each submission on those five categories and ranking them in four different methods, highly advantageous, advantageous, not advantageous, and unacceptable. So, what we've done here is list the evaluation criteria and what the, you know, how they get advantageous or highly advantageous, that type of thing. So, it's similar projects completed by the firm within the last 10 years, experience of the firm in public bidding projects, because this will be bid publicly, experience leading public engagement processes for senior centers specifically, experience of the professional staff and any subcontractors. So, we believe that either likely an architect, but possibly an engineering firm will respond to this. But if it's an architect, they might have a sub-agreement with an engineer for electrical, structural, civil, that type of thing, and likely will hire a cost estimator. And so, the last one is, you know, how well are they presenting all of their information? Is it complete? Is it easy to read? Is everything that we want addressed comprehensively? And then we outline the selection process for, you know, how we go about determining who's the selected firm, what is the selected firm, and what our next steps are. So, then we will make a recommendation to the Select Board and then award the contract. And then we've attached three attachments, a sample contract that the town uses, certain forms, and then insurance limits. And those are all appended to this document here.
Those are standard forms that I think we use on many of our contracts.
Yes, Ed provided them to us. Yes.
Anybody have questions? I've got one or two myself. But anybody first? Nope?
The end date of the funding opportunity is May?
March 17th.
It's May 2023.
May 17, 2023.
Of when the funds are available still, right?
Well, yeah.
But you want this done before, by the end of March?
By the end of March, which makes sense.
Yeah, we want to put, obviously, some pushing in. Based on the will, it states two years from the date of death, which was May 17, 2021. So, we certainly don't want to certainly butt up against that date and have something come up and miss this wonderful opportunity. So...
Gotcha. Okay. Any questions? Go ahead. No? Okay. I've got two, if you don't mind. Back on Section 3, so submission requirements. So, must have, must have at least five years, I'm sorry, at least five senior center feasibility studies and five senior center design projects that involve similar scopes within the last 10 years. So, that's 10 things...
Yes.
...that they need to have done in 10 years. Is that realistic?
Yes.
I mean, I guess I'm querying the "and" or the "must have."
Well, for this phase, we, they need to have feasibility study experience, but we might end up working with the same firm for design and construction, and we felt it was important to include that piece in it as well. So, a lot of times, firms will do a preliminary, a preliminary design or a feasibility study, and then move right on to a design and construction project. I feel like this is appropriate, and firms that specialize in senior centers would have completed those five feasibility studies and five senior center design projects within that timeframe.
I'm going to ask Andrew his opinion on this. Because you're basically, you're hoping to get architects or engineering firms that have done lots of different kinds of buildings, too, not just senior centers, right? You're not, you're not limiting it to just senior center work, right? Could be other public buildings, right?
Sure. Typically, that's in the RFQ response package. And, you know, upon further evaluation of the firms, we can go on websites or just to see their portfolio of work. I think another important thing to note is, as Libby said, I don't think it'll be difficult to find firms who have had this range of experience, whether it's out here in eastern Massachusetts, wherever. We, it was important to establish a minimum so that we made sure that we were getting quality applicants, right?
Okay.
All right. These projects don't have to be, they have to, the architect has to be registered in Massachusetts, obviously, because that's where the project is. But they're example projects do not have to be in Massachusetts.
I see. Okay. Okay. And so, when you're talking, and this is jumping over to the minimum evaluation criteria on page 10, it's kind of tied into the same thing. So, the number of projects, so are you considering feasibility studies and center design projects all as projects? Or are studies separate from projects? Or is everything a project? Because you're saying that you have to have, this is the minimum. If you don't have at least five of each, you're out the door, and you don't even go on to the comparative evaluation criteria, right?
That is what it says.
And when you look at the first comparative one, I just want to be sure I'm understanding, if they have less than six, then they're out, they're unacceptable. So I, I just want to be clear that, that studies and design projects are all considered projects with a capital P, or are they separate thing, I, it's just a, it would be a question I would have, I guess, from not knowing this as thoroughly as you do. Just so that nobody's confused when they're trying to apply, and it's easier for you guys to apply your criteria, that's all.
You're, you're saying in a situation where a firm was hired to do the feasibility study, and then went through with the construction of the actual building?
Well, no, I mean, it, it- Well, you've got minimum here, they have to have completed at least five studies and five design projects. So if they haven't done a total of those 10, then they don't go any further.
Yeah, I would, I would think a, a firm would market the study and the, and the actual building project, like you said, project with a capital P, separately from each other.
Yeah, okay.
They're usually pretty good about, just, just for your background, I'm an architect in Boston, if that wasn't clear. So usually they'll, they'll kind of draw a clear line in the sand of, this is the feasibility study, this is the building, we're marketing it separately, because it's more, it's, they're both relevant to different experience.
Right. But if you look at the first number one right there, so similar projects completed, that's my question. So projects to me means five, it doesn't mean 10. So if you mean five studies and five projects, and they all are projects, great. I just, I just think that might need a little tweaking in terms of clarity, so that you don't back yourself into a corner when you're trying to score these things. I don't know, it just read, it read a little bit contradictory to me, that's all. That's my only point. Thanks. Anybody? Anything else? Thoughts? But otherwise, this is great, you've got a lot of information in here, it looks quite thorough, so. Great, thank you for that presentation, all right.
Thank you.
Next, what are we, next on the, Janet, you back up, or where are we at? Yep?
First of all, thank you, and we do have a meeting tomorrow at 12:30. We'll just be discussing these kind of couple of things, and after that, we hope to have the RFQ out the door on Thursday, the 23rd, as we've scheduled, so that's, that's the good news. So again, we reviewed a lot of the properties, I think you have an understanding of the properties. We're asking, you're, we're requesting, if it's possible, for you to reach out to those property owners, to see if they would have any interest in discussing with this design firm the potential of either donating or selling property to the town for a senior center.
And just for the public listening, could you give us those again?
Again, yes, so on Moosebrook, on 299 College Highway, that would be map 28, lot 29, and map 28, lot 26. On Clark Street would be 79 Clark Street, and 89 Clark Street. And then on College Highway, map nine, lot 141.
Okay, good, thanks. So at this point, are we, yeah, go ahead, John, sorry.
So are we, are we, are you?
That's what I was just going to ask, we should-
That was, that was my next question, yes.
It sounds like, yeah.
I have some edits that I, that I'd like to propose, but first I'm-
Okay. But the RFQ is a totally separate thing from what they're doing, though. It's not, they're not at that stage yet, at the public safety.
What, what, can you paraphrase what public safety is going to talk to us about?
They're going to present their suggested parcels of interest. So they're, these guys had two or three separate pieces of theirs, because they're not, they're on a different timeline with the, with the, with the will, so they had to already get to the RFQ. Wait, wait, we're time restricted in terms of the-
Well, time restricted over there-
On this one, yes. Yeah, exactly, yeah. So in terms of, in terms of, of, the committees are parallel, but they're at a little bit different stage, the way I understand it. And so I think in order to be able to move and adhere to the timeline that's been presented, which is like a-
Pretty critical timeline.
Yeah, I mean-
$2.5 million.
If you want proposals back in August, or thereabouts, to be able to interview and award in September, if I remember that, then you've got, you've got to kind of keep on moving on that, so.
And the criteria of like, our understanding is it takes about six months to complete the study, so if we get delayed-
Yeah.
Well, I was only talking about delayed by half hour, you know, or something.
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, but you have, I mean, given that they're going to meet tomorrow, I mean, it would be good to know what, what kind of suggested, it, it's, yeah.
That's all this night, because you guys can all vote me, and we have to change it.
No, but I mean-
My, my, so, let me just say, so my concern goes back to 7E.
7E?
7E, which is the-
What page, sorry?
My concerns on-
Are you up again?
Seven smoking services, letter D, that list four, the existence of senior center and fire station in the old town hall. And then one additional building in our site.
Right.
So listening to what you have said, Chris, I would say number four should, should say up to two additional.
Or something like that.
To keep a little more private, then I believe that number five should be added, that should the select board ultimately decide to want to look at a scenario where they're both on the same campus, or in the same building, that, that, that should be bullet point number five under there for consideration, if we get to that point, because we don't, we don't have enough to decide that right now. So we, we put it in there that, because we come up with a location, we'd say we want, we want one building, or one campus, on one parcel, and ultimately, that one issue goes to the voters as a package.
And we're six months away from bringing that package to you to formalize, right? We're asking now for outreach to those owners, to see if they would be willing-
The letters would still give the law today.
Right.
The, the way I heard you thought you were going to draft them.
Right, no, we, yeah, the idea, the request was to draft letters to the-
We're, we're silent about consolidated campus. We would only be able to amend this, which would then further delay. So I, so I'm just disclosing it now, that remains a possibility, and that's it, and we just disclose it, so whoever's getting this RFP or RFQ tomorrow.
So it could be something like, uh-
It's kind of like unknown buildings that may-
I'm not sure what this design firm has to do with a campus of more than one facility.
But if we take the building, and we say the first floor back is the council agency.
Well, you did that once.
Fire trucks on the front, and we're going to do second and third floor, we're going to put an elevator in there, then, right, that, that's where they come in, it's like, within this footprint here, how are you going to do the COA?
Are you having that part of the criteria, because then you're limited significantly. The responses are that these people are going to be-
Well, I'm just saying it needs to be, I think it needs to be an option. I think we, we need to present to the taxpayers, two projects and/or one project consolidated.
I, I, I think it's an option, I just think it's premature.
Yeah, I think we're all open to that, I think this is not the moment in time that it should be included in an RFQ for a senior center feasibility study.
You're looking at the design of a particular center, no matter where it's, no matter where it's sitting.
Is the design going to create a blueprint? Is it going to call specs, is it going to say you need this much square footage, and you need this?
It would, yes.
But if it's attached to another building or not, it still has the same square footage that's required, right?
I, well, no, because then you got common space.
And I can see sharing property with a public safety complex, I, I, I don't, I'm not clear on John's vision, so.
Can I just, is, if the senior center feasibility committee is going to stay for the public safety, can we just hear from the public safety group and then come back to this? Would that be all right?
Yeah, because I plan, yes, because I'm going to ask the public safety committee the same question I asked council agent, I'm sorry, the committee, which, and the committee said that they were silent, not by choice, just because it didn't come up. So if they're silent, and they need, because they don't want consolidated building.
It's come up at both committees, every single meeting, and it's an option on the table. It's not a, it's, it's nothing at all that's a hidden agenda item. In fact, we've been going way out of our way to make sure that everything that happens in these two committees are all very much systematic and above board, so. It's not a hidden agenda, or in any way silent. It comes up every single meeting about the possibility of having a combined site. I'm just not sure the process of the RFQ needs to include that right now.
Because it's not, yeah, well, let's, let's hear from, if everybody's agreeable, let's, if you guys are willing to hang in here, let's hear from the public safety building committee, and hear what they have to say. And theirs is on basically the interested parcels that they have identified, and going through what they've identified, and some of the criteria they've used, I think, and so forth, right? Sarah, so introduce yourself, Sarah.
Sarah Stein, nine Cold Spring Road. I'm the chair of the public safety building committee. Several members of the committee are here with me tonight. We sent a letter, I don't have it on the screen, unfortunately, I didn't think about that. But what we're here about is to talk about properties that we've analyzed. We are on a different timeline, so our position at this point was to try and gather more information, in particular on the privately held properties, before we move forward with a feasibility study. Just to kind of let you know where we're at, at this point. So for town-owned properties, we looked at all the properties in town. We came down to four for final consideration, the highway department, the transfer station, town hall and fire station, and then the fields and the woods behind Norris. After doing more analysis and taking a look at those, we came down to 210 College Highway, which is the existing town hall and fire station, really looking at the existing fire station portion, of course. And then 8 Fomer Road, which is the highway department, prioritizing in that order for a feasibility study. I also have attached a letter, I sent over all of the properties in town that were looked at, and why they weren't considered, whether they're conservation, limited access, steep terrain. To speak to it a little more, Moosebrook Road, the transfer station was removed due to traffic pattern concerns. And 34 Palmer Meadow, which is the space behind Norris School, was removed due to traffic concerns from Gunn Road onto College Highway, and the potential impacts to Norris School. The privately owned properties we looked at were those up to a maximum of one mile from the center of town, north and south along Route 10, and up to a quarter mile from Route 10 east and west. We wanted to keep the building central in town, and also stay as close to Route 10 as possible for access, particularly for the, the fire trucks. After reviewing all of the town, or the privately owned properties that met our criteria of over three acres and the given location, or over six acres with a building, and we came down to five different properties. The top three, we were given equal priority, they're pretty much the same as the senior center, 89 Clark Street, 79 Clark Street, and zero College Highway. I did have map 19, 141, not nine, 141, just, I think, typo one way or the other, but, um, yeah, Cindy checked, I think it's 19, but, um, so we had those three as equal priority. And then as kind of a fourth and fifth, we had the intersection of Moosebrook and College Highway, similar to the senior center. We actually had two different lots, we had 2825 and 2826, so one was the same, one was different, but the same general area. And then we also, as number five, had zero Fomer Road, which is map 28, lot 31, as a, a fifth option. So in order to move forward with our feasibility study, we'd like to get more information from these landowners, if they're interested in working with us. So we were requesting at this point, the select board send a letter to these folks. We were looking for a minimum of four acres of usable land on the parcel listed, and a minimum road frontage of 150 feet. We'd like to find out if these folks are interested in engaging with the town regarding the donation, or sale of their property, or a portion of the property to the town of Southampton for utilization as a public safety complex. And then, of course, based on our conversation, we leave that up to the select board about the senior center as well. We would like to request in the letter that responses are received within 30 days, and that responses include any other considerations the landowners would like the town to be aware of with regards to their property as we engage in this process. So our intention as a committee at this point is to move forward with our list of requirements for the building, and move forward so we'll be ready to go for an RFP or an RFQ, whichever we deem as appropriate, once we have all this information on these private properties. But our hope is also to get this information on these private properties as quickly as possible. We don't want to include a private property to be analyzed if the owner has no intention of engaging.
Gotcha.
That's all I had, unless there's any questions, or if anyone else on the committee has anything you want to add.
Thanks, Sarah. So what I heard is that the senior center has three considerations right now, with a fourth possibly, and that the public safety has two town-owned properties, one being the fire station, one being the highway department, and that between both committees, there are five private properties that the select board, you're requesting the select board to send letters to. And they all overlap, with the exception of one, the zero Fomer Road.
All right. So with that, questions, anybody? So you guys have done a whole lot of work too, in terms of, the, the list of properties that you've, you've removed from the list is pretty extensive too. Just in terms of the, the properties that you were taking a look at and considering, both town-owned and privately owned as well. So, yeah, there's definitely a few that just are very difficult access and things like that, or wetlands, which probably rule out a few things, right? Okay, good. So John, with that, you got thoughts? Anybody? All right, so we have a request to put out some letters to the private landowners that have been given to us. So we have five altogether, is that what you said, Rini?
Yeah, 89 Clark, 79 Clark, zero College Highway, Moosebrook and Route 10 there, and then zero Fomer Road.
So Moosebrook has got two, right? Moosebrook and College Highway.
There's two proper, there's two lots, yeah.
But there's, there's one that's overlapping with senior center, or no? No?
No.
You have to go to the mic, I'm sorry.
We had map 28, lot 25 and 26, I believe they had 25 and 29. We're looking at that, that intersection there, but we'd have to take a closer look at the maps, I think.
Any questions, Joy?
No, I'm just thinking about each of their timelines, and if it makes sense to have the ad hoc senior center feasibility committee move forward with the RFQ, and send, parallel send out the letters to all the private landowners, and then see what comes back. And if there's any consensus between the landowners and both of the, of the projects, then maybe go back to the architect or engineers and do an amendment to specifically focus on, on that property, to see if that's feasible.
Well, true, and I think if, if indeed, the goal of, I mean, see if I can recap the timeline the way I heard it. To try and get out the RFQ within the next couple of days, and it's going to be out until the early part of August. Both committees, I think, are requesting letters go out to private landowners with a 30-day turnaround time. So by early August, if they get out by July 1st, early August, they'd be back before, correct, before a design consultant is even selected, or before the proposals are fully in. So there's not even a necessary, a need for any kind of amendment. All that information is going to be coming in kind of ahead of time, right? Am I following that correctly?
Yeah.
Yeah? Okay.
I just want to say something about the letters. I was on the select board the last time this process went through, and there were problems, so I'm just going to request that, that we look carefully at reaching out to landowners. I trust that you'll write a letter, Chris, about, you know, saying that, just what Sarah said, about donation or purchase. But also, I don't know if it should be a certified letter, I don't know, the last time we did this, we only heard back from two landowners, and then there was a decision to only reach out to one landowner. So I'm just going to, just suggest that whatever process is approached in some way, that we're going to get a response, instead of just having, we don't know whether someone might own the land and not get the letter, or whatever, so I just-
I mean, I don't know how it normally would work, Ed, but my, my first thought would be some sort of a registered letter, or a certified letter, I mean, just to be sure that it gets to them, right?
Okay.
Whether they have to sign for it, or-
Make some sense.
Yep, thank you.
I just wanted to bring up one point with regard to, John, you were asking about the combined facility. We've discussed that in, in our meetings, of course, and one thing that's come up is more, you know, shared parking potentially with different buildings. Chief Workman could potentially speak to that more than I could, but that's something that's come up during our meetings as maybe an option, rather than one building is shared, outdoor facilities, parking, driveway in particular.
So more of a campus.
That's what's come up in our meeting, you know, casually talking about possibilities. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Okay, good. All right. So with all that in mind, and- So with all that in mind, and knowing that Senior Center folks are going to be meeting again tomorrow, are we ready to suggest any further edits, other than the two or three that we talked about briefly, in terms of allowing that four-to-six idea? And trying to, if you've got some language, four-to-six parcels to look at, three town plus four, and then whatever you wanted to suggest for...
I think if number four is changed, right now it says one additional building.
Right.
And or site.
Yeah.
Do you change to, up to two additional buildings and or site that have not yet been identified, that would incorporate both of the, both my issues?
I don't have a problem with the statement in there saying that the town of Southampton is investigating the possibility of having an additional public safety building on the site. I mean, I don't have a problem with that at all. It might just give the, unless Andrew, you know, Sarah, and Libby, you have any, you're on the receiving end of these sort of things, is that going to in any way change anything?
I mean, personally, I don't think that necessarily the feasibility studies of the Senior Center or the public safety complex necessarily need to be tethered to each other, right? Until we have a clear definition of what it would take to potentially construct a Senior Center or a public safety complex. Or the other part, too, is that we want to make sure we're advertising to firms that, with Senior Center experience, right? That may not be, that may not be applicable to firms who don't have public safety experience, right? So I think, in my mind intuitively, the two can live separately. They don't necessarily need to be tethered together. But in the sense that, I think that by the end of this feasibility study, there will be a time, a period of time where we're going to be waiting for the public safety folks to complete their feasibility study to see how far we can take this. I think, right now, it's good that we're thinking about these things, but I just want to make sure that we're not necessarily putting the cart before the horse in that respect for all hypothetical, do you know what I mean?
Okay. Thanks.
So the way that this one had been worded is one additional building, and my suggestion had been to say between a minimum of four and up to six, or additional two, or something like that. So if you folks would just take that into consideration when you meet tomorrow and modify that, I think that would probably solve most of our issues on that. But Franzy, question?
No. I'm good.
Just kind of one last comment is that our feasibility study, I want to be very respectful of Mr. Parsons' will, which was clearly defined for Senior Center, we're using the money for this feasibility study from his will. So I just don't want to, excuse me, muddy the waters too soon. I think down the road, it sounds like a great option, but again, this money is coming from Mr. Parsons' will, so just want to keep that in mind.
Okay.
I think Chief Workman wanted to say something.
Yeah? Chief? Yeah.
Chief Workman, Southampton. Yeah, I think the RFP, I mean, I don't know, just keeping it open, how much difference it makes if you just had inclusive language for a fire station. I think either way, we can certainly modify it later. It certainly sounds like it makes sense for the letters going out, that they would be inclusive in the possibility of having both.
Yes.
For that distinction.
Yeah, I think that's the request. That's the way I heard the letter request, would be referring to both facilities. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Good. So with that in mind, are we, would anybody like to entertain a motion to allow us to approve the RFQ with a couple of small modifications as discussed?
I'll second it.
All right. Any discussion, further discussion?
Some motions to approve as amended.
As amended, right.
As amended, so.
So that number four will say additional buildings get to be determined, however they decide to write it.
Okay. And Ed, you're on the committee, right? So you can provide a little guidance in terms of the wording of some of that, if we need to get it clear. Okay? Is that, are you okay with it? All right. Okay. If nothing else, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye? All right. Any names? All right. Perfect, I think. You have a unanimous vote on that.
When we put together these two feasibility committees, we were intentionally looking for people with engineering, architecture, construction background. And I just want to commend both of these committees, who I think have done an incredible job, meeting every two weeks, narrowing down parcels, and I just feel very strongly that these are major, major initiatives for the town of Southampton, and public trust is essential. So following the process is really, really important, and I think that committees have done a great job.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, thanks, everybody, for stepping up on both committees. It's been great. Yeah.
This is my last visit to the mic today. If you could, someone just send me the criteria so we make sure we have it before tomorrow's meeting, in case, I don't want to miss something that you're expecting to be added as criteria or as amendments to the...
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Okay. Yeah. You want to jot something down? Shoot it to me and I'll pass it on. Yeah. Libby, anything? Yeah?
So did your comments or your changes include the comparative evaluation criteria that we talked about previously, a change to that?
Yes, I would think, if you guys think that that is a little confusing, I think that would be...
Because I think you might have only referenced your comments. I just want to make sure that both of them...
I guess I was referring to my comments in general, but yes, I did make two separate comments.
I just want to be clear that we make that change.
But yeah, is everybody okay with that, the notion that it was feasibility and projects are combined as one thing?
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Perfect. Thanks for clarifying that. Good. Thank you very much, guys, for coming and presenting that. That's a lot of work. Yeah.
I'll make a motion to empower the Chair to draft a new engagement sent by a certified mail with a return postcard or envelope, so that, well, certified mail with receipt. The contents of that envelope shall contain a letter crafted by the Chair outlining why we're sending this letter. In addition, on one page four, checking out, yes, I'm interested, no, I'm not, or contact me with a self-addressed stamped envelope returned, so that we can at least know whether we get our responses back.
Okay.
To the registered owner, according to the tax records, of all the properties identified on the safety and any identified on council or the...
Senior Center feasibility.
The feasibility, that don't overlap.
Yeah, and within a 30-day timeframe. Return.
Is that on the council?
Okay. I think I hear a motion to that effect.
Is there anything else to that motion? I'll second.
All right. All right. Any further discussion? If not, could I hear a vote, please? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right. All those posed? All right. That passes as well. Good. Thanks, Sean, for that clarification. Very good. We'll get working on those. And yes, those that would like to close your meetings, you may do so.
Motion, Chair? Chair, sir. Is that called?
Okay. Well, we'll take it, you're all here. Yeah, so thank you. So the ad hoc Senior Center feasibility committee and the Public Safety Building Committee, you can consider yourself adjourned. If you'd like to stay with us, you're more than welcome, but you don't have to. Thanks for coming, though. Appreciate it. And again, appreciate all your work.
It's a lot of work with a small amount of people. When you look at all the systematic work on the properties.
Yeah. Good. All right. Okay, we'll continue on for those that are going to stay with us. All right. And moving on, we don't have any quarterly reports tonight, but we will have a town administrator report. So, yep. Yep, we're still recording, guys, so we'll ask you to please move on out. We're still recording.
We just want to keep out somebody's car.
Okay. Well, they must be outdoors out there, so... Yeah. Perfect. Okay. So let's move on to the next agenda item, which is town administrator report. Ed?
Sir, my updates. Stan Tech Engineering has requested that Mass DOT close out our convention for the Route 10 sidewalk project, has that been completed. There will be a decking pre-4 meeting next week at the East Street Bridge for that project. And we have received notification, although it has not been announced by the administration, that we are, are receiving the DWSP grant for the 76 acres on Upper Palmorey, got a road for the drinking water and aquifer protection, so that's around $213,000. And then on the other side of that positive note, sadly, we have been informed that our DHCD small-town capital grants for the acquisition of the right-of-way, the greenway from the railroad will not be able to be extended past its June 30th, 2022 deadline. I would like to take the opportunity to thank Representative Savidoza, Senator Ellis, and Representative Pease for their efforts in trying to get this grant extended for us and talking with DHCD about that. And I will say that as of having another meeting today, that Representative Pease actually went and filed an amendment to the bond bill for $100,000 to try to fill this gap.
Yeah. And just to add in, because I was in on one of the phone calls on that, I mean, this was the very first grant that we'd gotten through the grant, with the grant committee's efforts. And it was for $100,000 toward the acquisition of the railroad. And ever since we've been in process with our legal team and the rail banking agreement, it's now been, for months now, it's been in the hands of the Pioneer Valley Railroad and their lawyers, right, to do all that they need to do to formally abandon the railroad with the Bureau of Standards and various other things. And it's totally out of our control, but nothing has moved as quickly as it should have on their end. And unfortunately, for a grant program, that usually most grant programs, in my experience, are at least flexible enough to allow amendments. The DCHD has just been adamant that they will not amend, allow any extensions. So this $100,000 is not coming from them, and hopefully, we can figure out a way to fill in that gap. But we do have $270,000 toward the 370 or 350 purchase price, because we got that through CPC, remember? So we do have that, but...
We actually have the other Mass Trails grant for $100,000.
Right, right. And that's not a jeopardy rate?
Well, not yet. Hopefully not. I mean, it's, you know, one is kind of hinged to the other, so it's really, if we don't have the acquisition, we're really, you know, stuck on some things here. So this is a real big disappointment, I have to say.
Yeah, that is a big disappointment. Is there anything we can do in terms of the railroad?
Well, I guess our legal team, you're not talking to the railroad directly, it's our legal team and their legal team, right, that are talking?
Correct. And right now, it's actually in the 90-day window for Mass DOT to, we do say, yes, they want the right-of-way corridor and don't offer it to the town of Southampton, or say, no, they don't want it, go ahead and move forward and sell it to the town of Southampton. So until Mass DOT gives an answer, they cannot go on to the next step and actually file the transportation order.
Yeah. So, I mean, that's been the challenge, and, you know, it's been good, at least, to have the reps and Senator Ellis join in and at least try to talk to the DCHD with Ed today. And we're hoping that that might bring a little bit of muscle power, but it didn't seem to make any difference at this point. So, but while we're on the grants for a second, so just to see, so the $213,000 grant for the watershed protection means, therefore, that we won't need all the money that we approved at town meeting from CPC for that, right?
Correct. And plus, they have changed their program a little bit this year. Instead of a reimbursement program, they're actually going to give the money to us upfront.
Oh, that's a lot easier.
We won't provide it with the paperwork, so administratively, it's going to be less work also, because we won't have to take all the $446,000 of the CPC funds and then wait for the reimbursement and reimburse CPC.
Right, right. Okay. So we would eventually, or we would let CPC know that we don't need $213,000 of what got approved eventually?
Correct.
Right? Good. All right. Well, that's...
I think there was an intention by CPC to write the article in such a way that it was up to, in the past, when the purchase of Glendale, 111 Glendale, was, it was contingent upon getting the grant or not. This time, the decision was made to write it so that it was up to the full amount. So it would not require much to just...
Great. Just turn the money back, or we didn't even get it technically in our hands, but we got the approval for it, right?
Yeah. And it was written in such a way as bad as we didn't get the grant and still...
It was still funded.
...the acquisition.
Correct. Okay, great. Okay. Sorry. Go ahead, Ed. Continue.
Let's see. And just to let you know that one of the two new field signs, which the Park Commission received funding from the Community Preservation Committee, has been installed at Labree Field, and it does look direct.
It does.
It does. It looks really good. Yep.
There was a pre-bid site meeting at May and Hand Meadows Sanctuary for Trail Restoration and Building Quotes earlier this morning. The quotes are due next Monday, June 27th, at 3:00 PM, and will be open that evening at the Special Conservation Commission meeting at 6:30 PM. And there were actually representatives for three companies that filled up this type of stuff.
Okay.
There is some interest out there. Want to let you know that Ellen Kuchek's last day with us will be this Thursday, June 23rd, and Flo Collins's last day will be on Thursday, June 30th. And then, let's let you know, Melanson has started their preliminary work on the fiscal year 2021 audit, and has reached out to the treasurer collector, the town accountant, and made her data they are looking for to do that audit. They have scheduled their in-house visit to do their field work the week of July 25th. And then also want to let you know that last Thursday, when everyone under the sun or moon decided to leave to have an event, that I heightened, before I went to the PBB meeting, did spend some time at the Park Commission meeting to go over some of the responses that we had for on bulk engineering, move forward with an engineering firm to do feasibility and possibly design on these flatbed and pedestrian walkway and build a park. So one of the, there was two firms that actually had experience in this area, and there was one firm that could start before the other, yet a little bit behind the heat ball at this one already. So GZA is one of the firms, they could start the site visit as early as this week, and I presented that to the Park Commission, and they were amenable to go GZA. So I have reached out to them, I've signed their proposal for the feasibility portion of that, and they have sent me three dates with a range of times ranging from a couple of days this week to Monday of next week. And I have sent those dates and times out to Randall, Tom, and Mark Reed. I'll see what works with that. We'll get this picked off.
Sounds good.
And then lastly, upcoming select board meetings for July are the 5th and the 19th.
Okay. So we're, well, I guess we'll get to it. When we talk about resignations, et cetera, we'll come back around on the Assistant Town Accountant. We'll get back there. Okay, so thanks for that.
Could I just ask a question on the H, please? What is the timetable for Melanson to be done?
Do they do their field work? Probably should be like 30 to 45 days after that.
So...
So by September 1st at the latest?
I would say so, yes.
Is that in the contract?
No, it's...
So sometime in September? I don't know. You'd want to say September 1st necessarily, but we don't know how long the field work's going to take, right?
Well, when they come in, it's a week or so. How many more questions they have, or looking for what data after that point in time.
Okay. All right.
Well, the Kinship came in, the work is all completed, so everything is set to go. There's no hurdles or delays. No delays, okay.
Mm-hmm, great. Okay, how about a few select board update reports from our various leading committees? And let me just say, too, we will put it on the agenda for the next meeting, the committee assignments. We had asked that everybody write, to add your current committees and your dates and times to the extent that they are set times, or even if they're not, just to let us know so that as we're looking at these, we can kind of see what matches, excuse me, all of our own schedules. So let's plan on doing that for the July fifth meeting, okay?
One person, excellent. Actually, after our last meeting, I think it was, got some information with it, that you're...
Yeah.
I'll go ahead and start, because mine is kind of easier, if you don't mind.
Sure.
CPC hasn't met, there's no meeting currently planned, Public Safety Building Committee, you heard them tonight. The next meeting is the eleventh of July at four-thirty. Council on Aging Building Feasibility Committee meeting, you heard their update tonight, and their next meeting is tomorrow at twelve-thirty. Council on Aging met on the eighth of June. Again, I just want to say thank you as well to Florence Collins, our volunteer coordinator. She's been a mainstay in the department through a lot of changes. Her last day is the thirtieth of June. Also, I want to say thank you to Lori Loizell. She's a board member for her service to the COA. Lori was very instrumental in turning around of the Council on Aging when there were a number of problems in the past, and she's been a wonderful person to be on the board. So she is transitioning off, is a candidate for public program coordinator position, and we have that PCF tonight. There's been a vote to extend the temporary admin assistant position for twelve weeks, just to get the other person on board a little bit more. I'm not sure if this is relevant to the senior center per se, but is someone going to report on the pickleball ribbon cutting? But I'll just mention that it was a great afternoon, very well attended, and thank you to the Janet Kane and a number of our donors, Dowd being one of them, and a number of other donors in town, but there was a great ribbon cutting down at the park. A number of events are scheduled for the COA, such as the next Memory Cafe, Volunteer Appreciation Luncheon, see the senior center calendar for updates. There's no meeting in July, the next meeting is August tenth at four P.M. And then, lastly, the Board of Assessors met today at ten o'clock. Bishop and Associates are conducting a number of inspections and updating town data. They did review a couple of proposals for aerial views to assist in evaluating properties. They had two Zoom meetings, two different companies that actually, one of them's Eagle View, I'm trying to think of the other one is, but anyway, they're in the process of discussing the possibility of adding that as a possibility for the assessor's office. They've reviewed the budget lines, they continue with interim, Dave Sikorski continues up to fifteen hours a week, Janine Domina continues with modified increase hours. The Board of Assessors is working very diligently to capture new growth, personal property tax and other municipal obligations. They're updating the posting now that the budget's been approved for the next year with an increase in the salary for a principal assessor. The next meeting, they have an executive session only next week, and then the next regular meeting is July fifth at four o'clock.
Okay, thanks. All right, yeah, go ahead, John.
Sure. I didn't make it to a lot of meetings since I was away, but I do know that Conservation Commission met on June sixth, and they, I believe the thing of the topic will be later is the ARPA application, which we'll discuss. And their next meeting is June twenty-seventh at six-thirty via Zoom. Housing Authority also met on June sixth, and I'm not sure when their next meeting is, but we did have the one-on-one for affordable housing on a housing trust last Thursday, and that went really well. We had okay turnout, but it was very informative, and the video should be up to view if anyone missed it. I will definitely send that out if you're interested. And that was last Thursday. Open Space is meeting this Thursday at second floor, six P.M. They also have an ARPA application for us to review later on when that's on the agenda. And Planning Board did not meet, they're meeting July sixth at seven P.M. here in Town Hall, and they also finally sent their ARPA application, so mostly it's ARPA from my...
A little proportion over there, have you? Very good. Okay, good. John?
Capital has met finance, I believe did meet, but I wasn't able to attend PPP meeting, and we'll get that in detail later on.
Okay.
That's all, Ed.
All right. Francine?
Okay. The Zoning Board of Appeals met on May thirty-first and approved the variance for property at eighteen Caitlin Way. They made the adjustment of a twenty-foot property distance from the property line to tenet two. I was unable to attend the Rastnor School Committee, and the Bylaws Committee will be meeting tomorrow, ten A.M. here in the second floor conference room. That's it for me.
Okay. We're going through these, all right. For me, just a couple of things, the Cost efficiencies committee is going to meet tomorrow afternoon via Zoom. We haven't met in about six weeks at least, just because we are all busy with budgets, et cetera. We're going to kind of pick up where we left off in terms of reviewing some of the cost efficiency measures that we actually did put in place via the budget, and kind of make sure everybody's aware of that. But we're also going to do a five-year kind of retrospective on our budget. So from two thousand and eighteen to now, how has our budget changed? And try to get a sense of where we're spending our money, where we might find places that we need to focus on as we go forward. We were trying to hit some of the low-hanging fruit, so to speak, in the first few months of this, but we need to now, I think, try to tackle some of the bigger issues and just try to see where we can hang our hat and examine our finances in town. So we'll be trying to tackle that a bit tomorrow afternoon. And the Grant Committee is going to meet on June thirtieth. That's the next meeting for them. And that's about it, okay? So if nobody has any questions, we will just keep on moving. We have lots of appointments and signatures and PCFs and whatever today. So let's go to appointments and resignations. And we have our first one, let me just do the first one maybe, and then, John, you can pick up these, some of these others here, or whoever. Resignation, Ellen Kruzek, Assistant Town Accountant, resignation effective June twenty-third, twenty-two. So unfortunately, Ellen has taken, I guess, a position maybe a little bit closer to home. If we remember, she comes in from Suffield, Connecticut, so this has not been an easy trek for her, probably, and we're definitely going to miss her. She's learned a lot in the few months that she's been with us and has been a great addition to working with Bradley. And so we want to say thank you to Ellen and wish her well. With that, just a quick question on that. Do we have a theory about recruiting, Ed? I mean, are we going to go with Indeed again, or what are we going to do? I hope not.
I hate Indeed.
Okay.
Paying the box, you know, we're still fighting with them for the taxes that they charged us last time around.
Yeah.
I'll take a look and see what else is out there.
Yeah, I mean, through the MMA, but, yeah, I don't know, yeah.
Well, this is the end of, you know, the MMA and the website and the Facebook, but I will look at some of the other...
But to get some things up, yeah.
...out there, absolutely.
Yeah, Francine?
Yeah, I just feel that...
There's also LinkedIn.
I've got a feeling about how you might feel about us going back to the former pool of candidates, there were a couple there that I think would deserve a second look and would have been acceptable. So if everybody's okay with it, and since it was Ed, John, and myself who kind of put that interview process together, if they're okay with we identify one or two people from that pool of people, contact them to see if in fact they might still be interested, we're willing to consider at this point a year later.
Yeah.
And start with that, I mean, that's...
That's a good place to start, yeah.
It's still anything, we just have to agree on who to contact.
Do we have contact information for them?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, if it hasn't changed since...
Yeah.
I don't have my notes with me, but if my memory is right, we ranked the individuals, we ranked the top three.
Yeah.
And number one excepted.
Yeah.
Or so would they.
Yeah.
To me, it would make sense, unless there's some rule that I'm not aware of, to just automatically, because it's been less than a year, to go to the number two candidate that everybody's going, because we would have done that, Ed, this person.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
To at least see if they're interested.
Yeah.
If they're not, then I'd...
Yeah.
...post him.
Right, I mean, they may have already, you know, been hired somewhere else, too, but nonetheless, I mean, you know, who knows, depending on what's going on with them. So does that sound like a doable thing, Ed, for you? I mean, is that...
I can go back and take a look at...
Yeah, I mean, we've got the, you know, you guys have got the contacts and addresses, let's go that way and try number two first and see what that one says, and then go to number three.
I pulled her resume and gave it to Ed last week, and I have another copy.
Okay, I forget about it, yeah, okay. So that's, that sounds like at least a place to start. Let's get that idea rolling and see if we can find somebody, so we don't have the...
Yeah, and I guess because of where we are right now with process, and to me, it also makes sense, unless somebody... It would make sense to me that if this candidate is available, allowing them in, that perhaps they come in and have a meeting with the town administrator and the department head.
Yeah.
You know, this would be the normal process, this would be the department's...
Right, yeah.
...process. Now, we would kind of, we only got involved with this because it was the department.
Right, exactly, yeah, yeah, okay, good.
So that makes sense to me.
Okay, all right, well, let's, is everybody in general agreeing with that? We take a look at candidate number two and see if they're, reach out to them, find out if they're still interested and/or available?
If they are, have them interviewed.
Yeah, and have them set up a time to come in, work, talk to Ed and Bradley on that, okay? All right, everybody okay with that idea? All right, let's start with that and see where we are by the next, the next meeting. And if number two falls through, then there's still a number three, right? That's what I understood?
Right.
Yeah, out of the three that you interviewed?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, all right, but let's try for number two and see if we have anybody, rather than, you know, going to something like Indeed, but, you know, there are other ways that we can hopefully reach out if we have to. Okay, thanks for...
I'll make a motion to accept a resignation.
All right, all those in favor? Oh, sorry, second.
Second.
Thank you, got a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Anybody want to pick up the next few here? We have a few from the building department.
Go ahead, John.
There's half a dozen from the building department. John, you want to read those?
I'll make a motion to approve Ron Lauren Building Commissioner term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Paul Gordon Jr., Building Commissioner alternate term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Jonathan Fly, Building Commissioner of Alternative term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Okay, all right.
A second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. How about the next, the next group down to Francine? How about Plumbing and Electrical?
Okay. Plumbing and Electrical, Anthony Lawren.
Thomas Sears.
Thomas Sears, okay.
It's four of them.
All right. Thomas Sears, Inspector Plumbing and Gas term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Anthony Lawren, Inspector Plumbing and Gas Alternate term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Ronald Bednars, Inspector Electrical Alternate term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
And you missed one, James Fisher.
I'm sorry, James Fisher, Electrical Inspector term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Reidy, you want to take another group? Maybe the next four?
Starting with Ronald Bednars?
Uh, no, starting with Nicole.
Nicole Fletcher. Okay. Nicole Fletcher, Friends Viewer, term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Gerald Parquette Jr., Veteran Service Officer, term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. William Wells, Veteran Grave Officer, term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. William Walden, Board of Registars, term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
I have a question about that.
Yeah, okay.
Is Mr. Walden the only registrar that's coming up for renewal?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
And he's also the only one that has an R after his name, so it would need to be filled by somebody that is also a Republican.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, and then enjoy the last four.
Sure. I move to accept the appointment of Arthur Lawrence, Conservation Commission, term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. John Lumbray, Personnel, Policy and Procedures Board, term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Christina Madsen, Public Safety Building Committee, term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. And Megan Gentile, Ad-Hoc Technology Committee, term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, you have a second?
I have a second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, good. That's a lot of appointments, and there's, I think, Ed, you told me there may be some others that are expiring?
There'll be at the next meeting also.
Yeah, so there's a few others that are expiring on June thirtieth, and we'll pick them up at the next meeting. So these are just, a lot of these are reappointments, okay? Good. Okay, let's move on then to departmental transfers, new business.
I'll make a motion to correct the deficit of top record wages of two thousand and nineteen dollars and ninety-seven cents by using funds in the Health Agent Wage Accounts, one thousand six hundred and sixty dollars, and the Health Expense Account of three hundred and fifty-nine dollars and ninety-seven cents, including for that part, as well as the deficit in road machinery expenses of the highway of twelve thousand dollars to be funded with general highway expenses of twelve thousand dollars, opening fourteen thousand and nineteen dollars and ninety-seven cents transfer number five.
Okay, could I have a second?
Second.
All right, and just a discussion item for clarity, the Board of Health is related to the one that was not approved at ARPA. This is for the January to June, no, January to June twenty-twenty-two extra hours that has been, been able to be covered out of their main budget rather than ARPA funds, okay? All right, with that said, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, thank you. Next, request for insert into the FY twenty-three tax bills. Ed, you want to pull that one up?
Sure.
Or I can, I can read it if you'd like?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so there's an important notice that wants to go out, apparently, in our new tax bill coming up. Top portion, and it says, "The top portion is the bill due August first, twenty twenty-two, and the bottom portion is the bill due on November first, twenty twenty-two. It is your responsibility to forward this bill to your financial institution that escrows your taxes. For online bill pay, please go to www.townofsouthampton.org. A payment box, silver, is located at the Town Hall entrance," and that's basically at the bottom of the stairs, I believe, as usual. "The demand fee, in parentheses, late fee, on all taxes, real estate, motor vehicle, and personal property, will be increased from fifteen dollars to twenty-five dollars effective July first, twenty twenty-two." And lastly, "The FY twenty-three water rates will be increased by three percent. Your September twenty twenty-two invoice will be the first bill that reflects this increase."
Correct. So two different notices, one from the Treasurer Collector's Office, the other from the Water Department, and the Select Board must approve all inserts into the tax bills.
I have a question. Has this already gone to print in anticipation of us approving it, or can we modify it?
I have no idea.
What's your question?
I've got more of the assumption that it has gone to print, it's just because it's now for approval. So I think under the demand fee, that, you know, while we did have a hundred and one residents at the town meeting, there's over six thousand in town, that we should add a sentence that says per annual town meeting vote. This is why the increase is going up, because it wasn't voted out.
It's probably a very good idea, yeah.
That's a good point.
Yeah, yeah, we didn't have a whole crowd there by any means, yeah.
Again, it's just over communicating.
Yeah, well, that helps, definitely helps. Okay, so we'll make that...
I'll make a motion to approve it as an amendment.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. So we will add just that little beginning, per the annual town meeting vote, the demand fee. That could be the beginning of that sentence, okay? All right, very good. Next, we have a disclosure of appearance of conflict of interest. Randall Kemp, Highway Superintendent, permit for an abutter on Seventy-Eighth Fomer Road. Ed, you want to just fill us in a little bit?
Correct. His direct abutter will be applying for curb cuts and right-of-way permits and has an abutter. The Highway Superintendent would have, as a non-elected municipal employee, a potential conflict of interest or a financial interest in that. So Randall is filing, so that we know, and it needs to be approved by the Select Board and signed by the Chair of the Select Board.
I'll make a motion to approve the disclosure of appearance of conflict of interest. Randall Kemp, Highway Superintendent.
All right, have a second, please.
A second.
All right, any discussion? Yes, John?
I have to vote against this, only because I think it's an error, whoever filled out the form, but on the second page, the author of the form did not confirm the statement. They're stating that they cannot perform their duty by not checking that box. If you cannot confirm the statement, you should refuse yourself. The box is blank. Looking through account, the fact that I disclosed it, I feel that I can perform my official duties subjectively and fairly. So I would support it if we amended assuming that the town administrator verified the department head's signature confirmed. It could actually be.
Can you, can you, um, is it page two?
It's page two, right here, right above the signature. He didn't check the mark.
Oh, I, okay.
I'm not seeing a box.
Right here.
Because, kind of, it's R, kind of, running.
Oh, okay.
The statement.
I thought, okay, it's, his signature is kind of blocking, but that's supposed to be a checkbox. All right, I'll amend my motion if you want. I'll amend the motion to say that, providing that our town administrator confirms with Randall Kemp that, uh, he can in fact, um, perform his official duties subjectively and fairly.
That's the original one. Did you have an amended form in front of you which is the correct one?
The amended one?
It was in your package.
I don't know, this is what was in our package.
I took mine out of my packet, I forgot.
All right, well, this is a whole different form then.
Right, yes, it is.
Oh, so it doesn't read.
Because of the fact that, after I looked at it, I was trying to figure out why there wasn't a spot for the Select Board Chair to sign it.
Yeah.
And I contacted the highway superintendent and told him, and he thought because usually when he's filling these out, it's because his wife is getting directly paid. He didn't think he had any financial interest in this, that's why he filled out the other one. However, and this is in my experience, because of the fact that, and it doesn't have to be a positive. It could be either positive or a nega- negative financial interest. I asked Randall if he felt that, is there a possibility that either positively or negatively, your property will be affected financially by your abutters' actions or by actions? And he had to answer yes to that, so the correct form is just going to run an elected municipal employee of financial interest.
Okay, then I'll keep my original motion to approve the form as it exists.
John?
I'll second that, I'll second that.
Let me know what I'm supposed to review.
Yeah.
Who am I, who am I, who am I, supervisor? Don't judge.
Okay, all right, we have a motion on the table, let's have a second again?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry about that, John.
Thanks. Yeah, no, we've got a, we're going to get, we're going to get some clarity in terms of her photocopying in packages going forward here. That's fine, there's always last minute things that come into us too, so.
That was a crazy day for that.
Yeah, well, we're going to maybe have to make some new deadlines too, just for everybody's sanity. Uh, okay, next one, um, amended to the town accountant, Bradley Oxon's, uh, contract for, uh, his agreement, rather, for hours and salary.
I'll make a motion to approve amendment one between the town of Southampton and Bradley, uh, Oxon, Town Accountant.
Second that.
All right, and any discussion on that?
Well, basically increases it to 34 hours per week.
Right, this is, this is including the, uh, the extra half day. This was, um, something that was put through in the budget that'll be approved. So the town accountant's office will be going from a four-day to a four-and-a-half-day scenario, or 34 hours per week. So this reflects that change and the salary to go with it, okay? Any further discussion on that? All right, did I have a second on that? Yes?
Yes.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Next, uh, the COA Frittan Contract, the FY '23 approval and signature.
I'll make a motion to authorize the chair to execute the Frittan Response Contract in the year 2023 as released in South Hampton House of Agency.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right, and just note, this is a one-year contract.
Yes, it is.
And, lost the track of the amount.
Twenty-eight and nine?
Twenty, was it twenty-eight?
Thousand.
Twenty-eight thousand, I think it was.
Which is actually the same, it did not.
I think it's.
The same?
Yeah.
Oh, good.
Yeah, okay, yeah, okay.
That's my only question.
And a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, I will get that signed and dealt with, very good. All right, next, we have a vacation carryover request from the town administrator.
I'll make a motion to approve the five-day carryover vacation into the FY '23 by Edward Gibson.
All right, any discussion? All right, if not, all the, let's have a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
You are welcome. All right, uh, now, are we actually at the ARPA? List, I know, we're, we're rolling here, I'm, I'm trying. This is actually, good, all right, so you have, um, somewhere in your package, you've got the, Judy's been great at, at keeping a, a running list of applications coming in, which I, of course, just misplaced, but I believe we're at 25 now, something like that, um, and we have.
I know there's 25.
Uh, hold on, just a second, let me get this. I'm just going to look at my own paper here. So I did send around, you've got the decision tracker, um, that we had worked on last meeting, I had had the original spreadsheet, John had modified it during the meeting, trying to keep track of all the things that we were approving, and then, rather than looking at it, I'm going to look at it online because I can see it a little bit better than what I've got here. Just recap for people, this was unfortunately the, the meeting where we were upstairs because we had been bounced out of this room, and so the recording is out there for the meeting that we made these decisions, which I believe was May, May 18th is what sticks in my mind. Uh, but what we have before us on the spreadsheet is trying to encapsulate not only the actual ARPA, uh, application, the, um, entity it came from, the amount requested, the amount approved, but I tried to, uh, put in some of the highlights of our discussion points so that we could have this all in one place. As we know, things are recorded, we've got minutes as well, but I think for ARPA and future auditing and future tracking, it's good to try and get everything as possible into one place. So as of the last meeting, and let me get down to the bottom. Okay, we, we believe we have a total of $1,800,000 in ARPA funds coming at us over a two-year period. Excuse me, we have essentially $900,000 now, and we believe that probably in July, we're going to get the second tranche already. I think there was something that came out from DLS, I think I saw that, um, about trying to award those funds pretty soon. Uh, we had 2.6 million in requests that we were looking at, and we, the other night, um, when we met, we approved $350,215.26 for FY '22, things that were going to be done in FY '22 before the end of June. Another $570,269.60 for FY '23 so far, and then a couple of things that we put out to FY '24 as encumbrances, and the amount of $10328. A large part of that was the school, uh, requests, as well as, I believe, the second year of the conservation agent. So at that time, as, as we left the meeting that night, we had approved $1,02812.86. So that leaves us around $779,000 left. However, we have one change that we're going to make to that because the premium pay had one small correction after our meeting. Let me find the right one here, I wrote it down somewhere, where to go?
So this tracker is not accurate?
It's accurate except for the premium pay that we had to reverse. Because there was one employee who left and, or sorry, one employee left, we had known that, but then the other employee that we thought had left was still on the payroll and he needed to be paid. And then we had made the decision to, um, put the town department heads at $3,000. So with that, we had approved for the premium pay, that night, um, we had approved $268,670.55, and now the warrant that we had before, so this has actually been paid out now, is $264, I believe?
Eight twenty-one.
Thanks, I'm just going to type that figure in here, so two six, you can type that in, 264.
Eight twenty-one.
Eight twenty-one.
Ninety-one.
Ninety-one.
It's less than.
Does that include the FICA? That might explain the difference.
I don't know, does it?
I don't know what you're looking at.
The, the premium pay, total premium pay on the warrant is $264,000. Was there a separate warrant for FICA for them, for the premium pay? Maybe I'm wrong, maybe we did prove.
I have a traditional payroll warrant, does it have the FICA line item in it?
It's a separate warrant.
I always think it's on a separate warrant, so I'll be double checking that for you.
Okay, well, okay, so we don't know then.
So you said that we approved 268.
We approved 268.
And you said the warrant's 264, and on the tracker it says 271.
271 was their request.
That was their request, the far, the far column over.
Right, and then we brought it back up. Okay.
Adjustment.
Okay.
Yeah, so it was 268 is what we approved, and then.
We have, yeah, there's a separate warrant here for.
Okay, well, okay, so we, I don't think we'll spend all the three or four thousand there, we'll, we'll check that on the FICA, so, sorry, Reenie, I thought I had it right. But because that should have taken into consideration the person that we had originally, um, thought was going to be off the payroll.
If, if the real owner is the 268, 670, FICA, I'm talking to that, or, I'm sorry, your 260, your FICA would be $3,195. So 268 might be the right number.
Okay, yeah.
I had just, I have a, a text thread with Gende relative to this, and, um, she indicated that she paid out 264, eight twenty-nine, ninety-one on the last payroll.
Right.
And will be paying additional $2,746.3 on the following payroll. And she said the Medicare is separate, and that was $3,879.66.
Oh, okay, so we don't have all that. Okay, so.
So I think that's accurate, the 271 then?
Sorry, John, could you give us those figures again? We got the 268, we know that, the, the amount, two seven, two million, I'm sorry, 2,007?
The, uh, initial, the net all-in payroll was an additional $2,746.3.
What is, so, sorry, so, yeah, so 264, eight twenty-one now, ninety-one, paid out now, two seven, four zero, sixty-three, next payroll. Okay, and then Medicare is separate.
Medicare was $3,879.66.
Seventy-nine?
Sixty-six.
Sixty-six, okay, all right. Okay, so we're kind of there.
Six thousand.
So.
Chris, one other thing that, um, on the tracker, I don't know if this is the most current list, but this was in our packet. It only has one year of the conservation agent, so we haven't approved that yet, have we?
Yeah, no, this, this is where we left off after the meeting.
Okay. Thirty.
This is where we left off at the meeting, I did not.
So the grand total, it's 271, four four two, point two oh.
Four four two?
Four four two, point two oh.
So that's only off by like thirty bucks, right?
Two seventy-one, four four two, two oh, okay. All right. Let me just check this for just one second here, if you don't mind, two seconds. Hold on two minutes, I just want to get my spreadsheet up to date here. Yeah, okay, so 271, four four two, twenty is our correct number for premium pay. All right. Ooh, something just happened, what'd you just do? Help? Okay, and we have probably four or five, a couple of holdover applications that we didn't make any decision on last meeting, and then, uh, two or three, well, a couple that we had kind of talked about last meeting and approved, but were waiting for the official application. So let me check, does everybody have the same total here? What do you have for a total?
Oh, you can read it?
Uh, no, the total, um, mine didn't add up for some reason, my new total, instead of the million twenty at the bottom of, uh.
Million twenty-three thousand, five eight four, twenty-five, one.
One, two, three, five, eight, four?
One, zero, two, three, five, eight, four, twenty-five, one.
Okay, thanks.
Can you repeat that number again?
One, oh, two, three?
Yep.
Five, eight, four, five, one.
Five, one, thanks.
Okay, good. So, we have.
So that's around $776,415 left?
Mm-hmm, something about that?
Was our awarded, uh, even, or if it only a million dollars?
No, last, last, last meeting, it was, oh.
I have that with question marks.
Well, I think, yeah, that's what we thought for the award for the ARPA, that we were going to get a million eight, right? Isn't, we haven't heard anything different than that, have we?
Well, that's, that's, million eight is rounded.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so less.
Yeah, well, hopefully we, we, I don't think we have that much more to, uh, to deal with, but we've got room. So, just to recap, so we have a couple that we had passed over, uh, last meeting. So the number, goodness, number four, uh, in terms of proposal number four from the Board of Health, that was on hold and that was essentially disapproved, that was a 2,466.07, which we just did out of the, um, departmental transfers for the January to June period, so that.
It wasn't really disapproved, it was funded otherwise, and it, from a, from their own line, from their own budget.
Right, but it's, but it was not approved at ARPA.
Oh, okay.
It was on hold, because we were waiting to hear from them what, whether they could cover it out of their budget. So now I'm just going to, going to change those notes and make myself a note that this was, um, not approved through ARPA because it was basically.
What I was trying to say is, we didn't vote to disapprove it.
Correct, we had it on hold.
Yeah.
But now, since that meeting, so this, this is where we left off at the meeting, so now, as we update this, right?
Yeah, we asked them to look in their own budget.
Which they did.
See if there are any funds available when they found.
Which they did, so that one is kind of off the table. Um, and then next we have, so the next one we have, just going down the list, I think, here, is the next one from the Board of Health. If I'm not mistaken, for, uh, four thou- $4,749.68, and this is for extra hours, extra three hours a week, right, from.
Is this number twenty-three on your list?
Uh, it's number twenty.
Twenty-two?
Twenty-two.
Okay.
Proposal number twenty-two.
And the total is four, seven, five, one, twenty-four?
That's what the chart says.
Yeah, my chart.
The application, uh, for recent.
Did they change it again? Hang on. Hey, 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 hold on, uh. Now, I had forty-seven, forty-nine, so where's the discrepancy, um?
On the, on the application.
They, they put in the old application again. The old application was in my budget. Who's got the right number for the January to June, sorry?
January to June?
Not January to, uh, July. Thirty-two, yeah, okay, so fifty-four, da-da-da-da-da, okay, forty-seven, fifty-one, and twenty-four. Forty-seven, fifty-one, and twenty-four cents, okay. Okay, all right. And that then is, excuse me, this is then for three extra hours a week time, for, for the entire year, for July through June. And this was actually the budget that they had put forward, I believe, in their wish list, which we had not approved as part of our central budget, correct? All right, anybody wanna talk about that, thoughts about that? We've got a long list of things that the health directors involved in here, related to COVID and other ongoing monitoring things that they're doing. In terms of the job descriptions that are being in, involved here with calls with DPH, calls from residents and business regarding COVID protocols, vaccination events, community events related to COVID or test kit distribution, communication with school nurses, et cetera. Anybody have any thoughts about this? So the amount, again, is the forty-seven, fifty-one. Yeah.
I had told, I had mentioned to the chair that I would not be able to support this without data.
Forty-seven.
I had mentioned to the chair of the Board of Health that I would not be able to support this without data, between this and the case tracing, I have just gotten very little in terms of any data, in terms of hours. I think that the deficit spent it and was able to cover it in their budget for this particular fiscal year, but it's not something I can support without having more information.
I, I, I agree with the data, but I, I would be willing to go for like a six-month period with accompanying data to be considered if it would be extended for the second six months. But it would have to, there'd have to be documentation to indicate, not just the hours, but the amount of service and the type of service that's being provided, what the issues are. Hampshire County's still in medium risk. I, personally, I see a lot less activity out there, but I'm not in the Board of Health officer, in, in, in any of the towns, to know exactly what they're doing. So, three months, six months, take a look at, at the information, not the timesheet, but the data, and then reconsider.
Okay, that's one option.
Well, we heard from the chair last time that she's not signing off on the hours of the employees in the department.
She is now.
She is now, but she wasn't before then, right?
As far as I understood. So she's got, she's taking more of a closer look in terms of the hours now, yeah. So, I, so what I'm hearing is, is possibly a six-month period with a review at that point in time, taking a look at real information and data in terms of what this, the workload really is. I mean, I think we had heard before, I mean, Ed, you seem to be in favor of supporting the workload, you, you have more knowledge of workload of the director than I do. Any, any thoughts on that?
I, I just see it every week, whether it happens to be, you know, the department head looking for directions for an employee who is tested positive, to the information that's coming from the state, or, you know, what's changing as far as whether it happens to be a mask requirement, a, a mask suggestion, you know, what have, COVID has not stopped by any means, so, that adds to, definitely adds to the workload, and it's three hours a week, you know, reasonable, what I'm seeing, have seen, and what I'm seeing currently, absolutely. Now, again, you know, I think it's gonna be here for another year, you know, is a six-month review of that, uh, permit? Perhaps, but, like I say, for the amount of, even the information that I get of COVID every week, it's it's, it's amazing what you have to keep up with.
So, I guess my hesitation on this is that this, this is a unique situation, because this is, we're talking about an hourly employee here versus a salary, so you have to, you have to be treated with, an hourly employee, you know, by state statute, the supervisor needs to apply a web signature to the timesheet, I'm glad to see that's happening now. I'd like to, probably have a sign note, we should probably make sure that's happening across the board, throughout the entire town hall. But then, when are these hours going to be done? Is it Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, we're gonna tack an extra hour on? Town hall's gonna be open on Fridays now, before hours, is, are they gonna be set hours, or are these gonna be flex hours to be done after hours outside the normal scope? Are they required to be done? I, I think as an hourly employee, work has to be done within town hall, you can't go remotely, but that might have changed under the whole COVID thing, so. Conceptually, if, if the town administrator says there's work to be done, and the chair of the Board of Health says there's work to be done, I would tend to agree with all that, but to, to an hourly employee here, what's the game plan? When are these hours going to be done? Because again, it's an hourly post, and if they're going to be done, are they gonna be done in town halls open? So, when are these hours going to work? Or just random questions that I have before.
Yeah, I guess I was assuming it might be on Fridays, but I don't know that.
Well, I go back to, not meaning to be secretive, but if it's silent, then it's open to interpretation, so.
They're, to me, they sound like they're just flex hours.
Yeah.
They can be done anytime during the week.
Which then creates a problem for all other part of the employees.
Yes, it does.
If it's specifically prohibited flex hour.
Right.
And, and we have to, we have to make accommodations at certain employment areas to allow it.
So, do you have a suggestion that we?
I think there is, I think there's a fair amount of admin assistance work that's being done, I think in the absence of an admin assistant in that office, I think there's, I think there's work that the Board of Health needs to do to look at the office, and I think that as long as I've been on the select board, there's been a consistent increase in hours and increase in pay in that department without systematically looking at the needs of the office. And I know we're in a pandemic, I'm obviously not immune to that fact, but we're going into year three of it, and I just feel like more work should be done. I'm glad there's accountability in terms of sign-off, but I just feel like, I just compared it, when I was in the Board of Health, I got detailed reports from the health agent, detailed reports from, you know, what every restaurant, every, everything that was done was detailed and provided to the board, and I just don't get very much data in terms of anything from the, from the Board of Health.
Well, and is that, is that a question, though, of just not good communication from the Board of Health to, to us, or is it, you know, a bigger issue? I mean, Francine, you attend the meetings, I mean, to what level of detail do you?
There's, there's some detail, I think it's, I think it's increased, but I have nothing to compare it to what Reenie's describing, because she was on at a different time, and there were different people there, and.
Right.
I think the reporting mechanism was, was different.
Yeah.
No, I, I don't see that, that kind of data coming forward, that's why I'm just saying, can we take a look at six months? Hopefully, it's not gonna be, we're not gonna be in the same place in six months with COVID, and if we are, then we'll extend it, if we're not, then we, then we, you know, limit the program, but we, we increase hours to a six-month period.
Well, if you do the six months, I think we've gotta be more, more specific, rather than just saying general data, we want.
Right.
What do we want specifically to know and to see on a regular basis? Not necessarily when they come for the, quote, quote of the report. Unfortunately, until we get our website updated, it's, it's still a conundrum to always have to go via, via Ed to get something posted with our, you know, person who's on call for us, but eventually, we will be getting a website, hopefully redesigned, where each department head can post their own relevant information and keep us updated. I mean, if you're talking about restaurant inspections, or the number of title, you know, septic things that have been done, or whatever, I mean, other towns do post that on their website, that's true, but I mean, they've probably got a better, a better system with their website to do that than we do right now.
Ed describes some of the ways in which he's engaged.
Right.
With, with COVID issues, I mean, it's not just residents, it's also employees.
Yeah.
Would, would it make sense to task the, the elected Board of Health with the next ninety days, the, the, I see ninety days, and now about three months, to, to report back within three, or were this for six months, if that's what everybody wants to do, but within ninety days, have a preliminary vote, preliminary report back to us as where they believe that often should be, should there be an admin and a director, should it all be the director or the agent? What should that, going forward, based on workloads and all that, because, you know, they, they did state that, some, some were writing letters, it's not.
No.
Somebody, and, and a department head salaries, job secretary, but it is, if there's nobody else to do it, so, you know.
Well, one of the things that they talk about here in the, in the new application was talking too, in terms of the, the, what we passed at, at town meeting, in terms of the septic betterment program, and managing some of the details about that in terms of, you know, interactions here.
I know, it hasn't, it hasn't changed at all.
Yeah, okay.
It hasn't changed at all.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's already been ongoing, that's already been, it's a new responsibility.
Can I ask another question? I don't see a request for case tracing beyond July one. Do we have an application from the Board of Health for case tracing?
I don't believe so, no. I mean, we, it ends as a, the current.
June thirtieth.
June thirtieth, yeah, as far as I know, it ends June thirtieth, yep.
Is that a consider, concern? Do you know, Francine?
I first thought at the last meeting, it conflicted with our meeting, so I, I don't know. I know that through the, um, the Health Alliance, the partnerships, that contact, contact tracing is, assistance is available to the different towns based on request, whether or not they have the manpower to meet that request, I don't, I, I don't know, I wasn't there, and I, I have no information.
I just wanna make sure that, you know, I know with the test kits, we were just given free test kits for the municipality, it was about a thousand test kits.
Yeah.
Yeah, we also did two vaccine clinics I volunteered on, at them, and the second one was not very well attended. I know, I was told that case tracing would be covered by the collaborative, so I just wanna make sure our dollars are being well spent, that's all.
As far as I know, that our, our agreement with contact tracer is not continuing beyond June thirtieth, there's been no request to, to continue that as far as I know, yep. So, at this point, I think I'm hearing maybe a, a motion for, I haven't heard a motion, I'm hearing an idea for a possible six-months agreement, and therefore, we, we take a look at whatever that amount is, half of this amount, as one idea, and report back to us. But I still think we need to be very clear about what kind of reports we'd like to see, and, and I don't know.
And when the hours are gonna be worked. I think that, and when the hours are going to be worked.
And when the hour, when the hours.
Those two covvies.
Right, yep.
I mean, for the sake of public health, I would just want assurances that restaurants are being, are being checked. I got a email from a resident who's very concerned about climate change, and about cooling centers, about, are we making sure that refrigeration is, you know, like, what do people have for backup? I mean, there's just a lot that needs to be done by the Board of Health, and, you know, counting animals, anytime there's new herds coming into town, I mean, there's, there's so many things that are housing concerns, and dump concerns, and restaurant concerns, and I just would love to know that everybody's up to date on all of the inspections and so forth.
Yeah, maybe, I don't know what would be, you know, not knowing the, sort of the workflow or the scheduling of when things happen, how frequently certain things have to happen, you know.
Restaurants are twice a year.
Twice a year, okay.
I just go back to, it's that elected board's responsibility.
Right, right.
To prepare the documentation to support this request.
Right.
To, to answer all these questions.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I agree.
All right, so we, okay, so, we just tell them that we need more specificity, but go ahead, yep.
So I, I guess, I'm, I'm okay, well, I'd be fine encumbering four thousand seven hundred fifty-one dollars and twenty-four cents, but not allowing it to be released until this comes back, that being said, we're not gonna meet again until after July now, right?
Right, July fifth is our first meeting, well, that's our first meeting, we, we probably won't meet on ARPA again until we have more applications and more money coming in.
But they could still send us.
Yeah, they could send us a, they could send us a report.
So I would, I would prove this four thousand seven hundred fifty-one dollars and twenty-four cents to be encumbered, a fourth of it to be released, so, three months, so on July one, they can, they can start a new schedule, and then within those ninety days, for, for that elected body to prepare, you know, what, what needs to be done, what is being done, what's the frequency, when are the hours gonna be worked? And, and send that back, and then that'll, in theory, that'll answer all our questions, and then we can release the other three, four funds.
Okay.
But it prints a placeholder there and holds the money, so we don't, we don't spend somewhere else.
Right, okay. All right.
I'll do that as a motion.
That's a motion, all right. Could I have a second on that?
A second.
All right, any other discussion on that?
I just wanna see if Francine feels clear about the data we're looking for.
Well, I think if, you, you have some various, your experience and your background bring you to a different place than, than I am as, as a liaison, so I'll take some information from you in addition to the discussion that we had, and bring that forward to the chair of the Board of Health as conditions for the, you know, for the three-month allocation, and the potential for a twelve-month allocation based on the information and the activity that we see, based on the outline that we prepare. And if it's satisfactory, then we'll take it, we wanna take it quarter by quarter, we do the first quarter, maybe the sixth one, then, it, it really is all dependent on what's going on.
And to be, to be, to be clear, the existing Board of Health is supposed to be doing all the animals and housing and restaurants and all that, we're talking about the increased request is because of COVID. So, to John's point, what hours, what are the hours, are they flex hours? What exactly, how do you justify the additional need?
Okay, so we have, have a motion on the floor and a second, I believe? Everybody clear on what we're voting on?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Voting on encumbering the full amount.
Encumbering.
I don't think, is it the quarter?
Yeah, well, allocating the first quarter. Okay, okay, encumbering the full amount, forty-seven, fifty-one, twenty-four, allocating the first quarter right now with a report to come in, and that will allow us to consider releasing whatever extra amount there is, whether that's, I think quarter by quarter would be onerous, frankly, but.
Well, I think, I think the first quarter is fine.
Yeah, no, quarter, quarter, the first quarter, I think is fine, but beyond that, you know, unless then, unless it proves not to be necessary, then obviously, but.
So, releasing any additional amounts other than the first quarter is subject to our vote, right?
Yeah, okay, all right, everybody clear? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, very good. All right, so then we have three, we have the, um, hang on here. Then one, the negative economic impact for, and we're not discussing it yet, Joey, so you don't have to leave, Michael Coffey, and then we have the other two that had been talked about and approved essentially last meeting that had come from the budget. Just trying to scroll down and get them here somewhere.
Are we talking about the, like, the planning board?
The planning board and CONCOM.
Yeah, the planning board and the CONCOM, so this would be planning, oh, so Planning Board is, is a, Project Number Twenty-three, we had put aside and approved essentially fifteen thousand dollars for that, and we do have the application, so we were basically waiting on the application just to complete the documentation process, this had been a line originally in the budget that did not fit in the budget that we moved aside to, to ARPA consideration, so I think this now gives us the application that came in with it, does anybody have any questions about that?
No.
Okay, so, every.
And this is line sixty-two, is it?
It's, it is, yes, yeah, and it was for a planning, a zoning board, zoning bylaw consultant, I believe, right?
Yes.
Okay, so everybody's, okay, do we need to say anything more about that? I think that was actually approved, we just started tidying up the documentation on this one. The second one is the one right above that, the, from the CONCOM, the part-time conservation agent, over two-year period, they had put in a request at nineteen-two, so that was thirty-eight, four altogether, and the, we talked about it a little bit, in terms of whether this should be a position, or a consultant, or whatever, and Joy was gonna go back to them, and that's where. and Joy was going to go back to them, and that's where they did come back with the fact that they're trying to get this to be positioned with this two-year being sort of a kind of a bridge process, I guess I would say, where they can, you know, cover the money, cover the person through the ARPA funds, but with the idea that that will allow them time to work toward, hopefully, or us all to work together to find funds in the budget to make that a real position two years out. And the one thing we had talked about that was there was probably no FICA or anything in here. So I think in their new application, they rounded up just a little bit to, is it 39? I think it was, they they added another $600, so $300 more each year for FICA. So that would be, instead of 38-4, it's 39 total is the request. If I have the right paperwork, Joy, is that right?
I I didn't see the new application.
Believe I have that right. Anybody have any, yeah, I think it was 39. Money on this thing is driving me crazy. Yeah, I believe it was 39,000 even. So that added a few extra dollars.
Yes, 39,000.
Toward toward the FICA. So it's an extra $600 from what we had said, and we had tentatively put that in two pots for FY23 and FY24. We encumbered that last meeting.
We already did vote on it? Okay.
The last meeting?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep. We just wanted, we wanted to get the application, and we wanted to be clear whether they were treating it as an agent or a consultant, and they've come back with the.
Right, right, right.
With the agent idea.
We had originally voted 38,400.
38-4, and so this is an extra six.
Yeah.
Yeah, so this is an extra six. So if we want to go with that, we've got to take another vote on it.
Okay. I move to approve the conservation ARPA application for a conservation agent for two years and for the amount of $39,000. No change.
A second.
All right. Any further discussion on that one?
Only only to clarify that the application is asking for the 39 over 18 months. So it'd be $26,000 for this year and $13,000 next year. If you look at, well, ARPA funds requested 39,000, it has to be, what says, have to be expended in the first year.
Oh, I see.
No, we're we're getting too fiscal, I think we're, yeah, I think we're, we get too fiscal years, yeah.
I said, this is the amount we're asking for the loss for the time that part-time agents receive.
Right, but fiscal year 24, we can only spend ARPA money in the first six months. Because it has to be spent by December 31st.
So you're saying the next eight.
Years, right, they're asking for a 20-month period, 24-month period, we can only use ARPA funds for the.
For the 18 months.
Calendar years or fiscal years?
The money has to be spent by December 24, I believe.
So it's only 18, yes, okay, so I amend that for 18 months. And I'll reiterate that to them as well.
So it won't be 39 then?
Well.
So is there, is there intended, they want this to be an employee for this?
Yeah, right. So the so the idea would be that by the time we got to the FY, what would that be, FY25 budget?
Rather than 24 budget, we have the full 500 or 700.
Right. Yeah. So, yeah, I think they were thinking we'd have two full years of this, and so that by the time we got to the next one, but you're right, because we're to June 23, to June 24. Well, depending on how how quickly they hire somebody, though, and we've got two full years of them to to use it before.
Well, it's just 23, which starts July 1, so you have to pause there.
Right.
And then that would be July 24, so we only have six months.
But what do they mean by, like, what do they mean by spend it, like, have to pay that person? Or can it be in the CONCOM coffers and they use it?
No, well, that could weigh on this, but if it's an employee, it's going to be timesheets and payroll, which, right, or a period, who was a contractor or consultant, and they charged upfront, and we were invoiced out of September 30. Potentially, the town administrator would prove that. Even if a vendor would be by hours, they would not be able to invoice upfront.
All right, well, maybe this is a challenge in terms of their wording, have to be expended the first year and have to be expended in the second year. I mean, I think that they they budgeted in their minds, anyway, a certain number of hours, I think it was 14 hours a week, if I'm not mistaken, 14 hours a week.
So they can increase the hours?
Well.
For 18 months?
Why don't we just approve a year, and we already did, and encumber the rest until they can get back to us? This makes me look back at Norris, then. Were all those adjustments made for the 18 month? Okay, it looks like.
Yeah, we did there.
19,500 would be the half.
Yeah.
Right.
We approved 19-2, so if we change that to 19-5.
Yeah.
Then they have between now and when we do the 24 budget. I mean, we can leave it, the encumbrance in there.
Yeah, but let's, so just go ahead with 19-5 and 19-5 and then.
Yeah, but some of these, explain to them that.
Yeah.
Yes.
That 19-5 is really, if you have to spend it in six months, you can't plan on spending over 12 months.
Right.
So if you hire an employee, you really only spend 50% of that, and that's going to go with money to reallocate somewhere else.
Yeah.
Then they'll have a full-time agent for six months.
I'd rather have them chime in on it. Can we just do a year and have them get back to us about it?
Well.
Well, I don't want to, I don't want to.
Yeah, I think they'd be happy with a year, and then I I wasn't at their last meeting. I was gone. So I couldn't, you know, go over this fully with them.
Well, but I think I'd rather not not assume that a year from now, we're of the same same amount.
Okay, so.
I'd rather.
I'd at least give them 18 months.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I, yeah.
At least the 18 months. I mean, if we don't want to do the two years, at least 18 months worth. But again, you know, hiring somebody and, you know, the, you're not going to hire somebody for half a year, probably, so.
24, 18.
Instead of 24 months, if they increase the number of hours.
It would be around 29,000.
In 18 months, would they get the same amount of work in 18 months if they went to 24, if they, if the person works more than 14 hours a week?
I just think that this is the Conservation Commission's decision to make in terms of the hours.
Yeah.
And I also just want to make sure that we're not holding them to a different standard than the Board of Health in terms of just, well, let them just use the whole two, whole year in six months' time. All I'm saying is approve a year, but just have them just get back to us. I'm not saying not approving the 39,000 or anything else. I'm just saying that.
Yeah, because we had technically already approved the 38-4 last meeting, so that's where I'm kind of confused. We'd already approved 38-4, so.
Without, yeah, but we were basing that off a two-year, off two-year, full two years. If it's 18 months, it's 29,250.
So at this point, was there a motion already?
Yeah, I had a motion to approve the current.
39.
Not 39.
We're just trying to figure out how to allocate it correctly.
Do you want, do you want to amend that to, or clarify that to approve the 19-5 for this fiscal year, which is 50% of their house, 12 months, and then the, and then, well, 9,750 gives us the same thing for the next six months. So they've got 18 months, and they can always come back and, but we're giving them exactly what they want per month. They just ask for 24 months, and we can only give them 18 months.
Yeah, I support that.
All right, so that may get us 29,250, is that right?
Right.
Yes. I will amend my motion to that.
So that's 18 months worth rather than two years, so I'll change that on the straight here as well. Okay, I think we hear that. So 19-5 for the first year and 97-50 so far encumbered for FY24 until they come back to us. Is that right?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, good. Now, we have two, and we're we're just coming back because we've got two final ones, I think. Now, Ed, before I do that, where are we going to go with the financial software? That's the one that we were holding out on because we really want to be sure that we can fund that through ARPA, which you said we should be able to, but I don't want to.
We can, but we're going to have to get the prices of the versions and everything else to be able to.
Right.
I think there were four things that were on the list.
Yeah, so we have, we have the open space, we have the the business revenue. Those are the only two other ones. And then the financial revenue.
But you had a list of a couple of other things. One was the feasibility study.
Feasibility study, which we don't have, yeah, I mean, so there's others out there, but but the one that I was hoping that we could get, we haven't heard any, we don't know yet on the feasibility study for the public safety complex. That's a placeholder. There's no money attached to it, per se. There was a question about whether the Parks Commission was going to put in for the tennis court repair.
Right.
We haven't heard anything about that. We do have the one for the open space pollinator, red community garden, whatever, and then the financial software was the other one, but I guess, you know, we were talking about financial software in the Cost efficiencies committee as well, so the essential thing is to find our one or two vendors and have them come in and have a meeting with Ed and Bradley and Jen and and make some decisions about who we're going to go with. But I guess we, you know, you were telling me, Ed, that this is going to be a longer process just because of conversion rates, that we're still a year out from getting new financial software, you think?
Yeah, you would convert, I mean, you might start backing up on January 1, but you would not convert until July 1. A new fiscal year. Quite a bit worse.
Yeah, yeah, so, and we don't even have a ballpark idea of what that kind of cost might be, you know?
Depends on what we're going to use and what we're going to go to.
Mm-hmm. Okay. All right, so we know that we've got at least those three, or two and a half at least. We're not sure about Parks Commission, if they're going elsewhere, grant money or CPC or somewhere else. I don't know what they're thinking about to do that. Oh, our total award for the ARPA, oh.
I see it back and back.
Oh, thanks, I didn't see that. Okay, so the total ARPA award is 1,844,554. Okay, that's nice to know. I guess I hadn't seen that figure. Thank you. Thanks. Oops, part of that was mine. Take the top one. All right, okay, so we have two to go in our current iteration tonight. Who would like to start with which one? We have Mr. Rizos here, so if we want to go back to the.
I will excuse myself.
Is this one?
Or do you want to?
Yeah, want to go back to that one? Yep.
Go back.
We'll go back to to the lost business economic impact here, and then we'll come back to the open space one. That was the last one that was in. Okay. All right. So we had a discussion last meeting. We were waiting to see what else was coming at us. And we basically had put it on hold because we wanted to go through some of the other official town ones first. But we have a request in from Mikel Coffey. Let me just find the category here, sorry. Under the negative economic impact category, it was proposal number eight, and it was for $25,000. So do we have any, we had Mr. Rizos give us a presentation, and we've heard that information about what he's trying to do. Anybody have any further questions on this?
Do you provide adequate background information?
Mm-hmm.
So just to remind you that I was trying hard to make sure that businesses had enough COVID test kits. So I went up and down Route 10, and I mentioned, because at that point, Holyoke had just offered a good amount of ARPA funds to hair salons and other businesses. And so I mentioned, I can't say that I spoke to every owner, because I was, sometimes it was employees. But I tried to mention that, you know, that there are options if you have, you know, we want to support our businesses in town, and so that if you want, you can check the website that we're, you know, we're going to be making decisions about ARPA funds. So that's why Mr. Rizzo submitted one. Part of me feels like I wish we had had a more systematic way of notifying all businesses, but on the other hand, we didn't systematically notify individual residents, committees, employees, and that sort of thing either. And it did come up as number three, I believe, in the order of the survey in terms of support for local businesses.
I did, yeah. Okay. All right. Any further questions on this? Are we ready to make a decision?
I was just wondering if I could ask Mr. Rizos to clarify again. You did receive some funds, you said, I think it was $60,000, is that what you said?
It was a loan.
It was a loan. Okay, it was a loan, okay. And was that from CARES Act or from?
AKA, small business.
Small business, okay.
Yeah.
Was that because of COVID or was, yeah, okay.
Yeah, the.
Okay. All right.
I move to approve the application, Mikel Coffey, the amount of $5,000.
Anyone want to second it?
I'll second it.
All right. Any further discussion?
So under discussion, so it says that these funds are going to be used to increase payroll, hire more employees, extend the hours, digitize the menus. So are we going to, are we going to release the funds as these things are done and invoiced against? Or are we going to just release the pocket, you know, the whole amount? How are we going to, you know, show the compliance? I get it, like, going back to Board of Health, it's ours. So we see timesheets with hours, and then there goes the money. Some of the other examples, you know, the teachers, again, you have the hours there so that makes sense. The water project, we're going to see the running go. I don't suppose of this, I just want to know how we're going to track it.
The application actually says.
Quarterly reports.
Yep, I understand that a quarterly report is required after funds are dispersed with an update on expenditures. A final project write-up reported required upon completion of the project.
So so as costs are encouraged, you're going to point out that the funds will be released.
My understanding was that funds will be dispersed, and then there'd be a quarterly update until the project is completed.
I mean, I don't think we were looking at doing little dribs and drabs of dispersment. It's just more work on on our end. I mean, I think the idea was to get funds out there, let people do what they needed to do, but tying it to a quarterly report back to us, a written report with exactly what's been completed.
But what, because this, with the exception of the paving, that's already happened. This, I believe, is the only other request that is outside of our schedule. You mean, it's not the art department, it's not the hardware, it's not.
It's outside of the town, municipality.
What's strictly all? Right, we can shortcut.
Basically, the difference is this, for the internal approvals, basically, the money is getting spent as they get paid in invoice. In this particular case, that may or may not be the case. You front the money, or are you releasing it in bits and pieces, you know, against a project? So, yeah, it's a little bit different ballgame.
But if we looked at some of the others that we approved, I mean, you know, we've obviously done the the whole chunk, obviously, on the premium pay, that goes without saying. On the on the water department one, are we going to just not release the 180,000 all at once? Or what are we doing with that one?
That would get paid as invoices come in against, yeah.
So our.
I mean, yes, it could, it could go in one chunk, it could go in three.
Yeah.
But our our internal policy within departments under the Board of Selectmen, it's paid as you go.
As you go. I guess I would, personally, I guess I would have thought that this would be outside of that because it's not a town. Actually, but I don't know.
I mean, I have no doubt that these things are going to happen. It says we're going to hire additional people, so we need to know what the employee count is now to get extra, much like the tax incentive on another system. Extend our hours, that's something easy one to track, right? You pay your open till X, now you're here. We're covering these additional hours with the additional staff, digitize the menus, there's a cost to buy that digitization. And again, I don't know if that's just the QR code or if that's actually electrifying the board. And then increase and improve the outdoor seating, so that, I mean, those are all the things that we see. So, I mean, could, I don't, I don't want to put them on the spot. We came up with a plan, okay, here's how we're going to do it, and we're going to do it much like we have support health. So we'll we'll cover the money for you. So we'll, we'll cover the money for you, but you got to show us the game plan and how we're going to do it.
What you're going to start with first?
Yeah.
Okay. So would that be reasonable, Mr. Rizos? If we asked you to give us a time, time schedule of what's going to be done, at what point in time? Could you, come on to the mic, sir. So like, what would be the first thing that you would end up doing? And, and how would that stretch out over the time?
For digitize the menu, right now, it's, it's not cameras. All the new Mikels, they have cameras, so they can change the prices, has pictures like the Ducky Donuts. That is the digitize. The second, for digitizing also to expand the, like, the website. I don't have a website for Mikel Southampton or advertisement. So the cameras, just the cameras, and the menu, that can be over $10,000. There's that part.
Yeah. But out of, out of the different activities you're going to do, from digitizing to improving the outdoors, to hiring new people, to expanding your hours, I mean, expanding your hours, I would assume you'd try to do as soon as you hire new people, right? So I mean, what, if you had to, had to put them one, two, three, four, what's going to be your first priority to get done? I think that's what we're asking, is what, what's the timeframe to get each of these done? Because we might not give you the 25,000 all at once, but say, we'll give it to you as soon as X is done.
So that is one of my first priorities within the next, because it's shortage also in the TVs, to have the digital menu and the digital...
So maybe, maybe now you can get the quotes.
Yeah.
Here's the price, so you can cut the check.
Yeah.
I mean, I think, I think it's a little...
Okay.
I understand it's written a little extra.
Yeah.
But we, we're going to need these documents anyways.
That's true, we do. We're going to need some level of receipts and stuff anyway. Yeah, that's a good point. Okay.
The way you were, you were saying it, we would reimburse him for the expense. But if he needs the money in order to do these things, we need to give him the money so that he can complete
Right.
whatever portion of his plan.
Right.
Yeah, and, and again, within the 25,000, digitize the site cost X, whatever it is, here, here's the quote.
Yeah.
Okay, so we match the check up quote and go ahead and order it. So here's the money at the time of order. Or some of our lines, you know, or the...
So to come, come to us with the quotation for what it's going to cost first, and then we would release that money? Is that what I'm hearing?
I don't even think it needs to be us. I think we're authorizing up to 25,000 to be spent on these specific items that he asked for.
Right.
And that we empower the TA who's overseeing the ARPA funds to go ahead and release the funds upon documentation.
Yeah, okay.
That, that he feels will support our audit of his goals.
Okay. All right. I think that's relatively clear. Good. Okay, I think we got it. All right. Perfect. All right, so all those in favor? I think we had a motion, or do we have a motion on the table?
I have, I don't understand something.
Yeah.
Let's say if I need, like, Ms. Professor, if I need the money to hire the employee, if I need the money to do the, buy equipment, if I need the money to buy, I need to get loans for myself, it's easier for me, if I get the $25,000, and I bring you, okay, the $10,000, we spend the menu. $5,000, spend payroll or extend hours. $5,000 spent on this equipment. Another $5,000, they spend fixing outside. It's easier for me to have the money and, and bring the documentation, and tell you where I spent it, and what I did with the money, than to go backwards.
Well, I don't think you need to go in pocket for the money. I think if you want to buy something new, you should call up the vendor and say, give me a quote. Tell me how much this is going to cost me.
Yes, but the payroll and the extension, I need to...
Right, so the, so the, on the payroll, it may be, mean, within, say, okay, here's the person, I'm going to, I want to put somebody in for this, this is what I'm going to pay, it equals X amount of dollars. And then maybe in that case, you get, you get four weeks' worth of payroll, and then just...
Just the payroll, so to give you a little idea, so you understand better, just the payroll, right now, I need, I open Monday through Saturday, no, Tuesday through Saturday, six to two. I'm the only employee. Just hiring one or two people to expand seven days. Open six to six, all the money's gone, the $25,000.
Okay.
So just the payroll within six months, not, I'm not going to wait. So just telling that plan, all the money are gone.
Right.
Forget the digitalization of the TVs, forget the new equipment, forget the design, web design, forget paying bills because already I invest so much money, or fixing outside, so...
But somewhere, we've got to be able to release it with some documentation beyond this.
Right, I mean, if you think, you think it's in your best interest to spend the 25,000 all on payroll...
No, I didn't say that.
Well, no, I just, I'm, I'm just trying to answer your question, not how you put it to me. If that, what, of these reasons that you listed, we're agreeing to give you 25,000. However you want to spend it, on any of those reasons, you can do it all on payroll, you can do it across the board. If you, if it was payroll, and you had to go in the money, we don't want you to go in your pocket for it. You say, hey, I interviewed this person, I'm hiring them, they're starting next week. This is what I'm going to pay them, this is the hours I'm going to make. You know, we could give you a month's worth of wages. And then you just turn in, as you turn in those payroll sheets that you're paying them, we just keep, we keep...
Well, or as, as, I don't, I think this is going to be more cumbersome than, than we're, I mean, as we did for whoever we just decided to do this with, to release a certain portion of it, so that he can get started on something. Couldn't we agree to take out of the 25,000, release, I don't know?
I think, I think the onus on this is going to be on Ed and Judy to, to, I mean, we're asking for quarterly reports, we're asking for invoices. That's a lot of money that's being distributed that the school and every other department is going to have to make sure that they're aware of, and they're going to have to hold them accountable. I don't, I don't, I think we're just making a lot of work for ourselves. I mean, if we're going to approve $25,000 for what he says, we're going to have to get invoices to match all of it. I don't understand why we're making it more difficult for ourselves and him, frankly. I know we have to be accountable, but I'm putting that on Ed and Judy to keep track of all of this. Invoices, quarterly reports. Quarterly reports come up really quickly.
Yeah. But as we, as we've done with the payout already on, on premium pay, we had documentation behind it to allow that...
We gave out money to the church. Did we ask, did we tell them they can only, they have to get the...
We had quotes, we had quotations, yeah. So that was, so like, the, the quotation on the, I mean, I think the best thing then, if you're going to do that, would be, I mean, to start with some of these other projects, maybe not the payroll right now.
No, for others, the, my first priority is the cam, the TVs, the digitalize.
So then if you can get the quotations for that, all you've got to do is show what it's going to cost. You've talked to, present that to Ed, and that allows for the release of the money. That's what we're saying, I think. Okay?
So encumber the 25, but distribute it once the quotes come out.
Right. Yeah. I think that's what we're saying. Okay. All right. Do we have a motion to that effect? I'm not sure if we do.
I don't know.
I, I move to approve.
You did, all right.
For the amount, but not...
The 25,000.
25,000, all right, all right, good.
To be, to be released upon...
Upon submission of, well, yeah, documentation.
Yeah. Okay. We have a second on that?
I'll second it.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. It is approved.
Okay, thank you. So just I need to communicate with Ed, just bring the, whatever I do, bring to Ed.
Right.
Okay.
So quotations, like for the digitization, et cetera, and expansion, and whatever else you're going to do, and just get a stack of that, you could actually get two or three things together, and, and just come and have one meeting with Ed, and...
Okay. Thank you very much, have a nice...
Thank you. Good luck. All right, we have one last one. We'll wait till Joy comes back, because this is, the last one is the community garden from the open space committee. Is that on here? Did I put that on there? Eh, did I not put that on there? Oh, gosh.
It is, it's on, um...
It's a thousand dollars. It's, uh, where, where did I put it? Oh, gosh, Chris.
Where's this located?
Uh, it's the watershed parcel right across from, right up near, past the school on Palmer Meadow.
It's part of the property that's in the way to the water department?
Yeah. Yeah. And under them and Kestrel and whomever else. So across from the, sort of the new duplexes there, almost.
Maybe it's a thousand dollars.
All right.
I'll second.
All right. Any further discussion on that?
Yeah, I just wanted to double check. Because, you know, initially, I think they were going to CPC, was that decided?
Yeah, CPC couldn't fund it.
They can't do it.
They can't fund it? Because it's not within their...
Yep.
Not within their purview. And at one point, they were talking about a much more sophisticated gardening, garden option.
$10,000 one, yes.
Stones and benches, and it was just very costly to start with, so I think they've scaled it down quite a bit. I may not have put this on my list here, guys, I'm sorry. I'm not catching it. Does anyone else?
It's on the tracker, that's what you're asking.
It's, it's on number 25. It may not be on the decision tracker, right?
No.
No. Okay, it's on the other tracker, so it's, I'll just put it down here for the second here. So it was a thousand dollars, right?
First, was there infrastructure?
I was going to say, how many trackers do you have?
Yeah. Where, where's the best place to put it? Under infrastructure? I don't know. I guess so. It's one of those crazy ones, where we can put it somewhere. It's not administrative, that's for sure, all these, I'll put it in there. So, a thousand dollars for that. All right, so, do I have a motion? You made the motion?
Yeah, there was a motion.
All right. Phew, I'm getting lost. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Perfect. Okay, all right. So now, we're pretty much good. All right, I'm not sure that my thing is totaling up here, so I'm not going to give you a total figure here right now. But we have approved, so 25 plus one, plus the 4.7.
We're in a cumulative of 1,45,185.75, with an uncommitted balance of 791,368.25.
Perfect.
You're sure? I was, I thought we were already at 1.844.
That's the award amount.
That's the award of...
Yeah, I think we're there. Just, it lessens the pain in the discussion from here on.
Smarty. All right, so that's...
Pick that 799 aside, you'll take one.
All right, so we, we have some 700,000-ish left for future applications coming in. And once we, I mean, we are spent plus encumbered for all that we have. And once we have the new money coming in, we'll let people know, and run a second round, and set some dates for deadlines, et cetera. Okay? Great. All right, thank you, guys, for that.
Did I miss the planning board one?
Yes, we did that.
Yes.
Okay.
So that was another 15, right. Yep. Okay. Okay, I think that's it for new business. How about, um...
This is supposed to be under...
That's going to be under any other, any other business that can't wait. I think we hadn't gotten to that yet.
That's next.
Is it next? Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the police department's request for statement of disability.
All right.
I'll second that.
All right. All right. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. And then we have, yep, and we have another one for a one-day alcohol event. Let's see here. This was a couple of things that didn't make our packets at the right time here, I think.
I'll make a motion to approve one-day wine and vodka, which only license for Sunday, June 26, 2022, from noon until 8 p.m. for the purposes of graduation party and the applicant is Jane Sakar.
Okay, okay. All right. And looks like everything's in order here. We've got the, okay, from the Parks Department?
Yes.
All right. All right, good. We've got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, great.
Thank you.
And is there anybody?
The chairman?
Yes.
Do you want to take those up now, or do we have to do all the PCFs?
Um, let's go ahead and take those up now. If they weren't on the agenda, then we'll keep it separate.
The first one is a PCF for Florence Collins, counsel and agent, uh, for retirement as of June 30, 2022.
Okay.
June 36, Florence Collins, reservation.
I'll second it.
Her retirement, no? Retirement, resignation, whatever it is. Okay, very good. All right. Second? All right, we got that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right.
And then we have a PCF for a standard Massamino, M-A-S-S-I-N-O, Massamino. Massamino of Southampton, part-time, no benefits, counsel and agent, corporate and board ear, five weekly, 28 hours salary, oh, no, I'm sorry, hourly rate of $18 per hour. Approved by Department Head, Cal, Cal, and PPP on June 16.
All right. We have a motion, do we have a second?
I move to approve.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? This is the new position, right? This is the new program coordinator position. Okay? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, very good. All right. Does that take care of all those that didn't make the list? All right. Great. Yep, I know.
And we're going to...
Yep.
There's another one for... A PD? A PRF for volunteer coordinator, but that's still going to go to finance, so we're going to do that.
There was something...
Yeah, that's about finance.
Okay.
This one, though, for the police department.
And that's on the agenda?
It is.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Yeah, yes, one more for the, let's do, while Ian's here, yeah. For a PCF for Wendy Iozzo?
So we're going to want to order.
Yeah, let's do that, well, sorry. Well, while the chief is here. Thank you.
So the PCF for the Iowa ZZ line?
Iozzo.
Iozzo of Belcher Town, part-time, non-benefited police officer, step one, hourly rate of 18.75.
Okay. And this is the person who was full-time, is going to part-time? Is that right?
Yeah, she requested to be part-time.
Okay. So we haven't lost her?
We have not lost her.
Good. All right, well, that's saved. All right, we'll take it. All right. So we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Aye, all right, very good, thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks.
All right, okay, we will come back to the old business, but let's, let's go on with the personnel change stuff while we're in the middle of it, okay?
The PRF for, to post for the assistant town accountant position. They said vacancy be accepted. The resignation we accepted earlier this evening. Signed off by the town department head.
Right. Okay.
This was active on PPP.
Okay. Okay, this is gonna be a twenty-hour-a-week position, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. All right.
I wanted, I just made a couple of notes, let me just find them.
Go ahead.
I have to find it.
Yep.
Actually, I don't have any questions on the actual PRF. I have a question on the attachment that goes with it, assistant town accountant.
Uh huh.
Job description. If I should address it now or not.
Sure, go ahead, I'll word it.
So it says replacement, full vacant position, requested start date seven-eleven. It says to apply, send cover letter, resume, and job application to Edward Gibson. Why wouldn't that be Bradley? Did we already talk about that? Shouldn't that be the department head?
I believe, I believe when this was submitted, that they just used the.
Yeah.
Yeah, we used.
The old one.
Okay, we should change that to submit to the department head, okay?
I think, I think it should.
Either that or I could say I'm the H R director, it should come to me anyway. You want PPP? That's the H R?
I just think I want a, a department head to be the hiring manager.
He should get some practice.
Yeah, I think he should get some practice.
Yep.
And then on the actual draft job description, where it says supervisory responsibility. It says the employee has a regular and continuing part of the job, is required to lead. Shouldn't that be filled in? Zero, part-time employees? Or is that just a generic sort of? It should be zero, right?
Right, it would be, there's no, there's no supervisory capacity on this one, right?
I think that should be zero, and then the last sentence of that, it says employees work at the same location and at the same work shift. A few may be dispersed to other locations. Given what we approved before in terms of remote work, does that sentence, is that satisfy people, that sentence?
What are you looking at?
I'm looking at the job description, where it says supervisor responsibility. There's nothing filled in in terms of who they supervise, first sentence and the last sentence.
That's the second, second paragraph on the job description.
Employees work at the same location and the same work shift, a few may be dispersed to other locations. I'm just not sure if that's relevant, or.
Yeah.
Or if anybody.
I think we strike the first sentence through the last sentence between that paragraph.
Okay, that sounds good. And just one more thing on page two of four. Paragraph that starts serves as resource to all town departments, there's just a typo there, application, there's an aberrant, zero.
Okay, I could have let you know that I may not be able to change any of these, because I don't believe I have the word version.
Okay, well, I think they can be.
If you send it to me, I can change it into Word.
Okay.
Yeah. So we're talking about striking the first sentence and the last sentence under supervisory responsibilities, is that right? So there's no supervisory, supervisory responsibility there, and then take out the last sentence about the employees work at the same location? Okay.
And just one other thing on the top of the next page, education experience. I may not be familiar with this particular term, but it sounds very outdated to me, associate's degree or a journeyman's level of trade knowledge. What is that?
Is that a trade school person?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a trade school person, that's a plumber, electrician.
Yeah, normally. So associate's degree, maybe that, associate's degree in accounting, finance, or related field, I think that, or a journeyman's field.
A journeyman's license, you have to have so many tiers of testing done, you have to have so many years of apprentice, and then normal work hours under you.
A cut in pace from something else, so what if we just?
I just don't think it applies to this position.
Very good, so what if we just said associate's degree in accounting, finance, or related field?
Yeah, just strike journeyman's level.
Okay.
Right, we just strike those three, three parts, and then correct the typo in application on page two. Okay? We'll see if we can make that happen, okay? All right, thanks, Rainie, those are good catches, very good, thank you. All right, so with those changes, are we, do we have a motion? I think we had a motion. All right, we had a motion, so with these changes, could we have a vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, thank you very much, as amended. Great.
Next on the agenda, we can take a, we can turn it over to the directors.
Yep.
There are four PCFs. One is Patrick Wright, emergency one, equipment operator, full-time benefited, twenty-three dollars, eighty-one cents an hour. Second one is Patrick Wright, equipment operator, full-time benefited, twenty-three dollars, eighty-one cents. Third one is Patrick Day, emergency laborer, full-time benefited, sixteen fifty-six an hour. And again, Patrick Day, laborer, full-time benefited, sixteen fifty-six an hour. The directors have all the proper signatures.
Okay. All right, would somebody like to?
I'll move to.
Make the.
A second.
Okay, any discussion on those? So these are finally two people that have been hired at the highway department, so we're slowly getting some people hired in, which is great, all right. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Perfect.
Next, we have. We'll do one as a retro. PCF for rail and civil highway superintendent, change wages for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, which is an increase of ten thousand dollars effective July first, twenty-twenty-one. And per his agreement. Signatures are properly placed.
Okay.
A second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, go ahead.
We have, next we have. Five, five contractual changes for the fiscal year. PCF for rail and civil highway superintendent, change wages as of July first, twenty-twenty-three, per his agreement. PCF for Bradley Town Accountant, change of hours and wages previously approved by this board this evening, fiscal year twenty-twenty-three. PCF for John Markman, fire chief slash EMS director slash GMD, change of wages fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, per his agreement. PCF, Dallas Water Superintendent, full-time benefited. To ninety-seven thousand, five twelve, which correlates to his agreement. And then PCF for Edward Dixon, administrator, change of wages fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, that represents two percent.
Okay, motion, have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Everybody clear on those? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
And then I believe we already voted on the last one.
On, yeah, the resignation of Ellen, right, okay, I think that's it, so we've gone through all the PCFs and PRFs that we have right now, I believe so. Don't think we missed anybody.
Do the two, Cynthia Morton and Dorothy Sheen?
No, the, well, the swipe or do whatever it wants, but PPP held those in place.
Okay.
For the recreation.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, no, I had had them crossed off my list, so, okay. We'll come back when you have the full information and they reappear before us.
Okay.
Okay? Good, all right. Let's do one license since Tammy's been sitting here all night, and then we'll go back to old business briefly, and then warrants, okay? So we have a one-day permit, if I can find it. Ooh, hang on, it's in my package somewhere.
A one-day permit, two days?
Yeah, for Celebrate Southampton. A one-day permit from Celebrate Southampton for August thirteenth, it's a Saturday, and it's a wine and malt permit, and it's gonna be at Conant Park, maybe two-hundred-and-fifty-ish to three-hundred people, with a lot of luck. A lot of hope, and good weather, and basically not, from what we understand, you're not strictly, I think this is just in case people bring their own, is that right?
This also covers Friday.
Oh, Friday too.
The paragraph says.
Oops, I'm sorry, I missed that part. Thank you, okay, I missed that part, yep, got it.
Yep.
Okay, we got it, all right, so, okay, could we have a motion to that effect, then? All right. Very good, okay. Right, so it's Friday, August, so let me just redo that again, Friday, August twelfth, three to nine P M., and Saturday, the thirteenth, eight to five P M. All right, thanks, okay, and a second on that, please?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, okay, very good, that's taken care of. All right, so let's just jump back to old business for a few minutes here. That's COVID update, if we've got any new news, I know there's been some county figures coming out, but I haven't, I didn't follow last week to see where we were in terms of medium or.
Thank you.
Where we are on the list of things, does anybody know offhand?
As a county, we're still at, shall we say, medium risk, we're at higher risk, yeah, Haynes County's the only one that's in higher risk.
All right, and we, about the town of Southampton, where, have cases gone down, any, or are we?
I, you're taking a little time off, I did not check, I'm sorry.
Okay, all right. Definitely is still around, I know, I haven't heard of anybody lately in my own circles, but I definitely know of other people in other friend circles, not town-related, that have been surprised after graduation parties and so forth, so. Anyhow, okay, how about CARES Act update, is there anything to say more about that, really?
No, I thought I'd actually take a look.
So I, yeah, well, so I have two questions.
Yeah.
One is, have we, have we submitted all the paperwork to close out that we need to? And if we have, great.
Yes.
Yeah, number two is, we left money to the fire department to complete the sign upfront, that had to be done by December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-one.
He had spent all that on materials that were already here, so.
So everything's been expended.
Everything's been expended, so, but you do bring up a good question of, okay, where's the sign? Is that what's supposed to get, got taken care of once the warmer weather got here? So, I got.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, I think the only thing I've seen on a couple of, I forget if it was an MMA meeting or some webinar I was attending, they were talking about, maybe a DLS one, about ARPA funds, they were also talking about how they were doing at DLS, I believe, at a, a desk audit, basically, of all the, all the towns and all the expenses on, on the CARES Act, so they're running through their desk audit, and at some point, there will be an audit, a real audit of, of the CARES funds. But they hadn't figured out any timeframes on that yet, but, so that, that will be coming, because they definitely want to do some follow-up on that, I think, for all the different towns that receive money. Okay, East Street Bridge update, we sort of have seen a couple pictures here and there, looking like things are moving along, yeah?
Moving along, like I said in my town administrator's report, there is a meeting scheduled next week, which is gonna be, what they call a pre-4 for the decking. That's there, so. They're starting to come along very nicely, looking like a bridge.
Yeah, very good.
Is there any update on the Phase Two, in terms of the road? Are we just waiting to hear from?
We're waiting to hear back from S D O T at this point.
Okay.
All right, and then on. Where are we at here? The V O I P?
Yes, and Chris Orson and I had a Zoom meeting with T P X at the end of last week, and got them the remaining information that they needed to move that order forward, so we should be on set there.
Our thirty-to-sixty-day timeframe keeps, keeps moving on us, but who's buying the phones? Are they buying the phones, or we're, I mean, we appropriated the phones in ARPA, but.
Yeah, no, we buy the phones.
Yeah, so we still have to buy the phones, but then what's a realistic time that they're talking about getting this operational, though?
I would say sixty days.
Okay, because if we look at our minutes, it was sixty days from March, so we keep extending timeframes, which I'd like to be able to say we have it under control here, so, all right, let's keep, keep plugging away at it, so we get that installed, that's great. All right, moving over to, then, I believe, warrants, I think our next, Francine Maria.
Okay. Vendor warrant W twenty-two dash five A for eleven thousand, three hundred sixteen dollars and eighty-nine cents. Payroll warrant P twenty-two dash forty-eight for two hundred ninety thousand, thirty dollars and ninety-one cents. Payroll deduction warrant twenty-two dash forty-eight for forty-six thousand, two hundred fourteen dollars and two cents. Payroll deduction warrant with health and retirement. P twenty-two dash forty-eight A for a hundred and fifty-two thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars and three cents. Vendor warrant W twenty-two dash forty-nine for four hundred thirty-six thousand, eight hundred sixty-seven dollars and sixty-five cents. Payroll warrant P twenty-two dash fifty for two hundred ninety-nine thousand, fifty-six dollars and eighty-six cents. Payroll warrant for premium pay, P twenty-two dash fifty A for two hundred and sixty-four thousand, eight hundred twenty-one dollars and ninety-one cents. And payroll deduction warrant twenty-two dash fifty for ninety-six thousand, five hundred and twelve dollars and thirty-five cents.
Okay. Again, anybody have any questions on any of those?
I, yeah, I didn't.
Uh huh, go ahead.
Paying the first general, P twenty-two dash forty-eight. There appears to be three employees being paid on the water, isn't that, is that a town employee that's cross-selling, last name Morton, from O R I M? I don't remember signing up in any.
Oh, if the highway.
It's a town employee.
Yeah, okay, yeah, when they do work for them.
They cross.
They, yes, they cross over, and are charged that account.
That's my only question.
Okay, very good. All right, great. All right, next, other documents requiring signatures, the PPP rules and regulations amended. Ed, you want to run us through that, is that your?
Yes, that was the, I made the amendments to the entire document for the changes that were approved by the PPP and the Select Board. Those changes were to sick leave, to the short-term disability by adding the added term benefited to part-time employee. I just wanna keep forgetting, and then made approximately sixty-four changes to either the term Board of Selectment, Selectment, or the short abbreviation of B O S to Select Board.
Okay. So that at least gets us somewhere down the line, now, there's more to be done, right, eventually, on, on the manual, but this gets us the initial chunk that we had agreed to get started with.
Yeah, that's all.
Yeah, okay. All right, does anybody have any questions on that? All right, could we have a motion to go ahead and approve what's been done as the amended PPP rules and regulations manual?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, very good. All right, next, we have minutes to approve, we have three sets of minutes, one from November eighteen, one from March first, and one from March fifteen.
I'll make a motion to approve the first set of minutes, November eighteen, twenty-twenty-one.
Okay.
I just have one amendment, there's a missing dollar sign, all the rest have them, except the one, two, three, fourth, the fourth one's missing a dollar sign. Gomes Construction.
Yeah, okay, very good. All right, so. The Gomes Construction Company.
Construction.
Parenthesis.
Yes.
The dollar amount.
The dollar sign.
A hundred twenty-five thousand, nine hundred.
That's all, yep. All right, so, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. Then for March first, I'll take them one by one?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for March first, twenty-twenty-two.
All right.
A second.
Any.
I'll make one amendment there, under my name, when I was reporting. At that particular time, we obviously did not hear about the grant, since we just unofficially heard about it tonight, so I think that really should say may be funded through a grant. Community preservation met February twenty-third to review a proposal from the water commissioners, part of the project may be funded through a grant.
May be funded, right, yeah.
Might be funded. Under my name.
Page two.
The community preservation, second line.
May be funded.
Change will to.
Yeah.
Might, or may be funded through a grant.
Yeah. Yeah, good point, yep. Very good, anything else? Okay, all right. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
We'll do it Tuesday, March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, six P M., or either, it's like one minute.
Okay. Have a second?
Second, I think.
All right, any notes on that one? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good, okay. Good, okay, so a few, few little pending items here. Old Town Hall, I think some of that'll be, started to be taken care of a little bit with the money we approved through ARPA, we've just got to find a, a person to help us carry out some of the work that we approved to get done in terms of the woodworking and the painting on the Old Town Hall. Don't know that we know anything more about the charter building, have we written to charter to tell them to get rid of that building, or what, where do we stand on this thing?
I have not had a chance to write back to them and tell them to just get this stuff out of it and destroy the building rather than transfer it over to our ownership.
Is it, what, what is the equipment, is there something that we need to run our?
No.
Nothing, nothing. Nothing related to running a charter.
They're one time laws, not anymore.
Not anymore? So it's their equipment to get rid of it?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. And then, oh, sorry, skipped one. On the Clearwater Boundary, same thing, where we haven't found the.
Yeah, I just have to find time to.
The Beagle people, okay. If we could try to get those on the agenda, maybe before the end of the, well, before the end of the month, it would be nice to end the fiscal year without having these on here. And we're still obviously going to be working toward anything to satisfy our Green Community Grant.
Yep, you just got to give me back some more proposals, so.
Okay.
We'll move forward with that.
Great, all right. And then the East Street, yeah, repair of East Street to be on the tip proposal, we don't know, we're waiting on DOT, right?
We're waiting on MAST DOT.
Okay, all right. All right, so next meeting, we'll, we'll pick up appointments. Next meeting, we'll probably take a look at revenue and expenditure as well, since it hadn't moved very far on the, on the revenue part until mid-March yet, so we'll wait and see if we have a little bit more coming in. We'll take a look at that on the next agenda item, even though you got it in your email, it was not in the packet because we weren't going to discuss it. Calendar and announcements, our next meetings are July 5th and July 19th. And I think that's it. Yeah, yep. Did I miss something?
No.
Okay. All right. Therefore, could I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. We are adjourned at about 9:14-ish, thereabouts, something like that.
Thank you.
Great, thanks.
This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.